Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, October 25, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Person speaking during the general comment public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We'll announce when the phone lines open. Vice Chair Rosati, would you like to lead us in the invocation or the flag salute?
Sure, no problem. Back in 19, my invocation will be kind of inspirational. So, a lot of Burbank residents probably know this, and I bet you there's a lot of people that don't know this, but back in 1963, President John F. Kennedy crashed the John Burroughs High School prom. And in that address, he made the following quote: "All that this country is and all that it hopes to be is in this room tonight. We wish you all the best success to the seniors in that room." So I thought that was kind of an interesting bit of Burbank history that a lot of people didn't know. And you can certainly look that up if you want to find out the reasons why he crashed the prom in 1963 and how that happened.
Fascinating. Thank you.
So I'll lead us in the flag salute?
Great, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Yes. Board Member Autakunian?
Present.
Board Member Monaco?
Present.
Vice Chair Rosati?
I am here.
Chair Gambola?
Present.
Let the record show, Board Member Heiner is absent.
Thank you. In order to balance the health risk associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner, during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The cities provide alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Are there any announcements from city staff?
No announcements.
Okay. There's one public hearing on tonight's agenda. So now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 21000. But do we have a comment period or the general comment periods before this hearing, correct? So do I need to wait a couple of minutes for them?
Chair Gambola, the regular, just the general comment period comes after the public hearing item.
Okay, gotcha. There is one public hearing tonight's agenda. Now is the time and place for hearing on project number 210004984 concerning a request for a zone text amendment to amend the sections of Title 10 zoning with a Burbank Municipal Code pertaining to definitions and standards for single-family residential zones and non-conforming structures in order to regulate the construction, remodel, and addition to single-family residential dwellings. This item was continued from the regular planning board meeting of October 11, 2021. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No for myself. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representatives or any other person?
No.
No.
Yes. I've received lots of comments from members of the public regarding this issue currently and throughout the past few years regarding our processing of applications.
Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have. And just to clarify, the notices that we're referring to are the ones that were given prior to the public hearing on the 11th. This was a continuance of that item to a date specific. So yes, we have provided the required notices.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter?
Chair, just before we start, I just wanted to make sure there were...
I'm sorry, what was that?
There were written comments that were provided. I believe all of you have received them via email. There were, I believe, four comments, three in support, and one that was concerned about additional regulations being imposed on single-family residential. That's in addition to those that were received previously at the last meeting. So just wanted to make sure that was, I think, just for the record so that that's aware that that information was provided to the board electronically.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Chair Gumbova, Vice Chair Rosati, and members of the planning board. My name is Shipra Rajesh, Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight, you are being requested to consider a Zone Text Amendment to update development standards for single-family R1 and R1H zones and continuation of non-conforming structures. This slide shows the outline of the presentation. I will provide an overview of the concerns observed with the current code in the next few slides and discuss the issues observed with specific code sections and the proposed changes in the subsequent slides, starting with definition section, single-family development permit, design guidelines, height section, hillside development permit, fences, walls, hedges, and retaining wall section, parking and driveways, floor area ratio, and lot coverage section, and finally, non-conforming section of the code before concluding the presentation. The city updated its regulations on single-family residential development standards in 2017 to control the mass and bulk of new single-family dwellings, additions, and remodel of existing single-family dwellings. The 2017 Zone Text Amendment updated a number of regulations pertaining to single-family residential zones, including floor area ratio, height standards, fence standards, and created a discretionary approval process known as the Single Family Development Permit to implement design standards for new dwellings exceeding a certain size and large-scale additions and remodels. The updated regulations on single-family dwellings have been in effect for past four and a half years. While most of the regulations meet the intent of reducing the overall mass and bulk of a single-family dwelling, revisions to certain sections of the code are required to address several complaints and concerns regarding the current regulations and for continuation of better designs to preserve the existing character of single-family neighborhoods. More specifically, the proposed Zone Text Amendment is required to preserve the existing neighborhood character in R1 and R1H single-family residential zones by extending design-related standards to all additions, remodels, and construction of single-family dwellings, remove inconsistencies from the existing regulations governing construction of single-family dwellings, and enable efficient customer service by shortening planning review time for small-scale remodels and additions to single-family dwellings. Next, I will discuss the concerns with specific regulations on single-family dwellings and the proposed amendments to address those concerns. This slide details the issues related to definitions of retaining wall and whole-house demolition. Within the definition section of the current code, definition for retaining wall does not clearly specify a reference grade for measurement of height. Additionally, the existing definition does not identify the portion of a retaining wall that should be considered for measuring height. The next definition pertains to whole-house demolition. The code defines whole-house demolition to include demolition of both interior and exterior walls, including openings. This definition of whole-house demolition is used in the existing single-family regulations as a trigger for determining the applicability of single-family development permit discretionary review process. The definition takes into account demolition of both exterior and interior walls. However, demolition of interior walls and openings does not impact the overall mass and bulk of a dwelling. To address these concerns, updates have been proposed to the definition of retaining wall to include a reference grade, which is the lowest abutting finished grade, and text is included to specify that only the portion of retaining wall which is exposed or is located above ground will be considered for the purposes of measuring height. This update will facilitate consistent application of code for measuring height of a retaining wall. The definition of whole-house demolition is being updated to include demolition of only exterior walls and openings of a main dwelling and other accessory structures attached to the main dwelling. Demolition of exterior walls and openings better represent the alteration of mass and bulk of a dwelling. This slide provides an overview of the issues pertaining to the Single Family Development Permit discretionary review process. SFTP discretionary review process was created to implement design guidelines for large-scale additions and construction of new single-family dwellings to ensure compatibility with existing single-family neighborhoods. Currently, SFTP is applicable for construction of new single-family homes that exceed 3,000 square feet in area and .35 floor area ratio, for additions to single-family homes that exceed 500 square feet in area and is visible from the street, and for remodeling work that includes whole-house demolition, or in other words, demolition of at least 50% of existing interior and exterior linear walls and openings. The applicability of single-family development permit process captures a large number of appropriately-sized additions and remodeling work that complicates and prolongs the planning review process. The current timeline for processing an SFTP application is around 12 to 16 months. Staff conducted an analysis of all the SFTP projects that were processed in the past two years. The projects were categorized into single-story and two-story additions and new construction with varying square footage. The results showed that around 41% of the projects that underwent SFTP discretionary review process in the last two years were single-story additions, new single-story construction, and second-story additions that were limited to 700 square feet in size. This slide shows the histogram representing distribution of SFTP projects based on number of stories and area of addition. The bars represent all the projects that were subject to SFTP process in the past two years. The bars that have been highlighted in red depict projects that included single-story additions, new single-story construction, and second-story additions that were less than or limited to 700 square feet in area. These projects accounted for 41% of the total projects that were processed under SFTP discretionary review. It is staff's assessment that single-story additions, new single-story construction, and second-story additions that are limited to 700 square feet in area do not negatively impact the mass and bulk of single-family residential neighborhoods. Allowing exemption of these projects from SFTP will considerably reduce the planning review time. This slide provides a summary of proposed updates to the applicability of SFTP discretionary review process. Staff is proposing discretionary approval for all new two-story dwellings that exceed 3,000 square feet in area and .35 floor area ratio. All one-story additions and new one-story dwellings that are limited to 19 feet top of the roof height and 12 feet top of the plate height will be exempt from SFTP process. Additionally, SFTP review will be applicable for remodeling work of two-story dwellings that includes a whole-house demolition. Moreover, SFTP will be required for all second-story additions that exceed 700 square feet in area and are visible from street. Finally, SFTP will be required for all additions and remodels that alter the exterior elevations of a single-family dwelling that is a national, state, or city-designated historic resource. As previously mentioned, the current processing timeline for SFTP discretionary project is around 12 to 16 months. With lesser number of projects undergoing discretionary review, the timeline for processing SFTP projects is expected to reduce to six to eight months. And timeline for processing projects that are exempt from SFTP is also expected to reduce to six months or less. This slide details the concerns related to lack of design guidelines for buy-right projects that are not subject to Single Family Development Permit. Currently, the code does not provide any design guidelines for additions to and construction of new single-family dwellings that are exempt from a discretionary review. On your screen, highlighted in red, is an example of an addition to a single-family dwelling. The top figure shows the side view, and the bottom figure shows the rear view of the proposed addition. The existing dwelling has a pitched roof with stucco exterior walls, and the proposed addition to the house has a flat roof with siding along the exterior facade. Currently, the code does not have any provisions that would prevent construction of such additions with boxy architecture that does not match with the architectural style of existing dwelling. Similarly, this slide shows an example of a brand-new two-story house that was allowed by right. This is the side elevation of the dwelling. The proposed two-story house does not incorporate consistent architectural style, and the code currently does not have any design-related regulations for buy-right projects to prevent construction of homes that are devoid of any architectural style. This slide shows the front elevation of the same two-story dwelling that was allowed by right. The dwelling includes multiple roof forms and includes exterior facade with varying materials that do not mesh well together. With this Zone Text Amendment, staff is proposing to include design-related guidelines for all new additions and remodels that are exempt from Single Family Development Permit. Per the proposed guidelines, the exterior facade, including exterior material, roof form, and style of doors and windows of proposed additions, will be required to match the architectural style of existing dwelling. Additionally, regulations are proposed that require all new single-family dwellings and remodel work that includes whole-house demolition to incorporate a 360-degree consistent architectural design along all exterior elevations and comply with the requirements of Neighborhood Compatibility Review Design Guidelines Checklist. Finally, all new second-story additions and new two-story dwelling will be required to comply with the upper-story step backs and plane modulations that are specified in Section 10-1-603E of Burbank Municipal Code. This slide details issues regarding the maximum allowed top-of-the-plate height requirement for all single-family dwellings. Currently, the maximum top-of-the-plate height is 20 feet, as measured from finished grade or natural grade, whichever is lower. The top-of-the-plate height of a single-family dwelling includes the height of raised foundation. A substantial number of single-family dwellings within the city are built on raised foundation. A 20-feet top-of-the-plate height limits the ceiling height of a two-story dwelling and a second-story addition that is built on raised foundation. Additionally, the current standard creates design-related issues for additions to existing dwellings that are built on raised foundation or are located on upslope or downslope terrain. Staff is proposing an increase in the maximum allowed top-of-the-plate height for single-family dwellings from 20 feet to 22 feet. This slide presents an example wherein a two-story dwelling is depicted with varying heights, maintaining the same scale. Towards the left is a two-story single-family dwelling where the top-of-the-plate height is at 20 feet and top-of-the-roof height is at 26 feet 6 inches. And towards the right, the two-story dwelling has a raised foundation with a 22-feet top-of-the-plate height and a 28-feet 7 inches top-of-the-roof height. As seen on the slide, a 2-feet increase in the maximum allowed top-of-the-plate height does not substantially increase the bulk of a dwelling. In addition, a 22-feet maximum allowed top-of-the-plate height will facilitate better designs for additions and remodels by preventing change in heights of a dwelling resulting from varying floor heights and varying grade heights on existing properties. This slide provides an overview of the issues regarding the top-of-the-roof height of front porches. Currently, the code does not have any guidelines limiting the top-of-the-roof height of front porches located outside front setback area. Front porches located outside the front setback can be as high as the main dwelling, that is 30 feet. Lack of regulations governing height of front porches have resulted in designs wherein the front porch is not subordinate to the overall height of a main dwelling, which adds to the mass and bulk of an existing dwelling, resulting in a design that is not compatible with the existing character of single-family neighborhoods. With this update, staff is proposing a 12-feet limit on the maximum allowed top-of-the-roof height of front porches attached to the main dwelling. A front porch that is subordinate in height to the overall height of the main dwelling creates a sense of transition between the front yard and the interior of the home and reduces the overall mass and bulk of the house. The figure towards the left is an example of a house which has a front porch as high as the main house. In contrast, the figure on the right has a front porch that is lower than the main dwelling, creating an inviting entrance and lowering the overall mass and bulk of the main dwelling. This slide provides an overview of the issues with the applicability of hillside development permit discretionary approval that is required for certain projects in the designated hillside area of the city. Projects that exceed a certain height limit or include grading work are subject to HDP discretionary approval. This includes project proposing pools and spas on relatively flat portions of a hillside lot. Subjecting construction of pools and spas that are proposed on flat portions of a hillside lot where the grading is limited to construction of pool or spa prolongs the planning review time. With this Zone Text Amendment, staff is proposing buy-right approval of pools and spas that are proposed on flat portions of a hillside lot with a slope less than 5%. This update will reduce the planning approval time for such projects from six to eight months to a few days or over-the-counter approval. This slide provides an overview of issues pertaining to regulations on fences, walls, hedges, and retaining walls. Currently, the code does not provide a clear reference grade for measurement of height for regular walls and fences as well as retaining walls, which creates confusion among staff and the applicants and results in inconsistent application of the code. The guidelines on retaining walls for non-hillside lots are rigid without any flexibility to accommodate exceptions from existing standards, creating restrictions to accommodate unique slope conditions of a lot. Additionally, current standards do not allow more than one gate along the front yard setback, creating unnecessary constraints in accommodating additional gate for vehicular access. Moreover, current standards do not specify design guidelines for pilasters within a fence, and there are no regulations on replacement of damaged, legal, non-conforming retaining walls. Finally, in the hillside area, the regulations on fence and walls require a discretionary approval for all code-compliant walls and fences that are located outside the front yard setback area, which unnecessarily prolongs the planning review and approval time. Staff is proposing following updates to the regulations on fences, walls, and hedges, allowing up to two gates along the front yard setback. Clarifying the language of the existing code to clearly specify that height of fences in combination with a retaining wall along front yard setback is limited to 4 feet as measured from finished grade or natural grade, whichever is lower, and specifying a reference grade for measurement of height of regular walls, fences, and hedges that will be measured from finished grade or natural grade, whichever is lower. For retaining walls located in the non-hillside area of the city, staff is recommending permitting up to two retaining walls in the front yard setback area. Additionally, with this update, language is added to specify a reference grade for measuring height of retaining walls. Moreover, the code requires that within 15 feet of a sidewalk, the retaining wall height shall be measured from the sidewalk elevation. Language has been added to specify that in absence of a sidewalk, retaining wall height shall be measured from the public right-of-way elevation. Furthermore, text has been added to allow replacement of damaged, legal, non-conforming retaining walls. Finally, the code does not define cumulative height of a retaining wall or provide a methodology to compute the cumulative height of a retaining wall for a lot, which has led to confusion among the applicants and the staff, leading to inconsistent application of the code. With this update, staff is proposing removal of the standard regulating maximum allowed cumulative height of retaining walls. Currently, the code does not allow any exceptions to the retaining wall standards within a non-hillside lot. Staff is proposing updates to allow exceptions from existing retaining wall standards with an approval of a minor or a major fence exception permit pursuant to Article 19, Division 11 of Burbank Municipal Code. Additionally, text has been added to specify that exceptions will not be granted for retaining walls located within the front yard setback area. For the hillside lots, updates have been proposed to allow up to two retaining walls in the front yard setback area, consistent with the non-hillside regulations. Additionally, fences, walls, and hedges located outside the front yard setback area will not be subject to a minor or a major fence exception permit as long as they comply with the height requirements specified in Table 10-1-603A of Burbank Municipal Code. A minor or major fence exception permit for walls, hedges, or fences will only be required to allow exceptions from existing standards pursuant to Article 19, Division 11 of Burbank Municipal Code, where currently, any wall or fence or hedge exceeding 6 feet in height is subject to a minor fence exception permit or a major fence exception permit for a height exceeding 8 feet. Additionally, language has been proposed to specify that an HDP discretionary permit will be required to allow exceptions from retaining wall standards. Consistent with the non-hillside section, staff is recommending removal of regulations on cumulative height of retaining walls. This slide depicts a combination of a fence on top of a retaining wall along a front yard setback of a lot. The text in red depicts the proposed changes. Within 15 feet of a sidewalk, the height of a retaining wall located in front yard setback is limited to 30 inches as measured from sidewalk elevation. Within the front yard setback, height of a fence located on top of retaining wall is limited to 4 feet. is limited to four feet as measured from lowest abutting natural grade or finished grade as shown in red on the slide. No changes have been proposed to the maximum allowed height of a retaining wall. This slide elaborates the issues pertaining to off-street parking and driveways. Currently, the code has regulations which requires a lot to accommodate code compliant off-street parking when the house is demolished to an extent more than fifty percent of its replacement cost. Determination of replacement cost is challenging during planning review and requires input from Building and Safety Division. Additionally, it is difficult to determine the accuracy of replacement cost, which is misleading. The second issue pertains to the maximum allowed width of driveways within the front yard setback for lots where the garages are located towards the rear of the main dwelling. Currently, the maximum allowed width of driveways in the front yard is restricted to twelve feet, which provides limited space for accommodating increase in off-street parking within driveways. With this zone text amendment, staff is recommending use of whole-house demolition in place of replacement cost as a trigger for determining if demolition of a main dwelling triggers update to existing non-conforming off-street parking. Whole-house demolition is easy to calculate during planning review. Additionally, accuracy of whole-house demolition calculation can be verified easily during planning review. Moreover, staff is recommending to increase the maximum allowed width of driveways within front yard setback for lots where the garages are located towards the rear of the main dwelling from twelve feet to twenty feet, as long as the hardscaping in the front yard setback area is limited to forty-five percent. This increase in driveway width will facilitate accommodation of additional off-street parking within the lot. This slide details the issues pertaining to regulations on floor area ratio and lot coverage. FAR and lot coverage are the two parameters that govern the amount of square footage that can be built on a lot. FAR includes square footage of existing house, including both first and second story and other accessory structures that are not exempt. Lot coverage represents the square footage of the building footprint on a lot. And the code allows certain structures to be excluded from lot coverage calculation. Per current code, attic spaces that exceed four feet in height and that are characterized by a structural floor are included within FAR calculation. Determining if an attic space includes a structural floor is challenging during planning review process and such a determination requires input from Building and Safety Division. Additionally, the code does not clearly list all these structures that are exempt from FAR and lot coverage calculation, which creates confusion among applicants. This slide shows an example of a dwelling which has a nine feet eleven inches high attic space. Per current code, an attic space that does not include a structural floor is exempt from floor area ratio. Therefore, the nine feet eleven inches high attic space shown here will not count towards floor area ratio. However, if an applicant were to propose a four feet six inches high attic space with structural flooring, that will be included within the FAR calculation. With this zone text amendment, staff is recommending inclusion of all attic spaces with floor surface that exceed five feet in height within FAR calculation. Determination of structural floor for an attic space is proposed to get removed with this update. Additional changes are proposed to list all the structures that are exempt from FAR calculation in order to avoid confusion and enable consistent application of the code. These include detached accessory structures that are open on all sides, understory of balconies and overhangs that are not supported by structural posts, trellises and similar structures that have roofs that are at least fifty percent open to the sky with uniformly distributed openings, up to two non-habitable accessory structures that are under one-twenty square feet in area, and in case of multiple garages, the one with lesser area will be exempt from FAR. This update will codify staff's current interpretation of the FAR exemption as it has been applied to some structures. Additionally, consistent with the changes to the FAR subsection, up to two non-habitable accessory structures that are under one-twenty square feet in area will be exempt from lot coverage. This slide details the issues pertaining to continuation of non-conforming structures. A non-conforming structure is defined as a building or portion of a building that was lawful when constructed but which does not conform to today's zoning standards. Currently, the code does not allow creation of doors and windows along non-conforming walls of a dwelling. Demolition of portions of non-conforming walls to create an opening results in loss of legal non-conformity, requiring the entire non-conforming portion to comply with the current standards. Additionally, the current code does not allow restoration and reconstruction of non-conforming portions of a residential structure that has been destroyed due to termites and dry rot. This is an issue because most of the times property owners are unaware of such damages which are encountered during ongoing construction. Requiring non-conforming portions of a house that have been damaged due to termites or dry rot to comply with the current standards prolongs planning approval time and results in financial hardship for property owners. This slide shows an example of a non-conforming wall. The portion of the partial site plan highlighted in red shows the sidewall of a dwelling with a three-foot-five-inch setback from the side property line. The required side setback for the wall is five feet six inches. The figure towards the right enlarges the highlighted portion of the site plan and shows the proposed demolition along the non-conforming wall for creating windows. Per the current code, the proposed windows will not be allowed along the non-conforming wall because demolition of any portion of the non-conforming wall will lead to loss of legal non-conformity, requiring the entire sidewall to provide a code compliant five feet six inches side setback, even though the creation of new openings does not increase the existing non-conformity. As a result, staff is proposing to allow by right approval of new openings that are limited to fifty percent of linear length of the wall along non-conforming exterior walls. Additionally, staff is recommending allowing by right replacement of legal non-conforming portions of a dwelling that has been damaged due to dry rot or termites. In conclusion, staff would like to reiterate that the proposed zone text amendment will preserve existing neighborhood character in R one and R one eight single-family residential zones by extending design-related standards to all additions, remodels, and construction of single-family dwellings, remove inconsistencies from the existing regulations governing construction of single-family dwellings, and enable efficient customer service by shortening planning review time for small-scale remodels and additions to single-family dwellings. Public outreach for the project was done in accordance with the law. Information regarding the proposed zone text amendment was circulated in the newspaper ten days prior to the hearing. Additionally, email was sent to regular applicants providing information regarding the proposed updates. Staff is currently in the process of following up with all the single-family development permit applicants to notify them of the proposed updates. Staff received a few public comments regarding the proposed changes. One of the comments was regarding updating the reference grade for measuring top of the plate and top of the roof height of a dwelling. Currently, height of a dwelling is measured from natural grade or finished floor, whichever is lower. It was recommended that the height of a dwelling be measured from finished grade, especially for relatively flat lots. Additionally, it was suggested that a nineteen-feet top of the roof height for by right one-story dwellings as proposed might increase the overall bulk of a dwelling. Finally, one of the comments inquired about the number of trees that were required as a part of single-family development permit process. The code requires two trees to be planted for all new single-family homes if there are none on the lot. The next steps include city council consideration of the zone text amendment as part of draft ordinance at a noticed public hearing. Staff recommends that Planning Board adopt following resolution. A resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Burbank amending Title ten, Chapter one, zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code to update standards and definitions pertaining to single-family residential zones and continuation of non-conforming structures. This concludes the presentation and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. We'll now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the Planning Board, please call eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five. The phone lines are now opened. Please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes for the first caller to get through the line. Adam Clerks, let me know when we have any callers. Again, the phone number is eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five.
Chair Gambo, we do have a few callers coming through the queue.
Great, thank you.
Our next caller is Simon. Simon, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Hi, good evening. I'm calling to oppose a number of major code changes being disguised as a zone text amendment tonight. I'm pretty sure people are gonna be very surprised and disappointed by this. Many of these code changes don't seem to be a good idea at all. They seem to be in direct conflict with what you're claiming the purpose is. I just one example, in one section you talk about the boxiness and the bulk and you remember the huge amount of people that thought that was a problem, but then you go raising the height of the second-story top plate and other features two feet higher in the sky. You can honestly say that making the box bigger is making anything less boxy or more like the character of the other houses. And anybody with sense knows the second-floor height, more than the roof height contributes to the bulk and this is actually an increase in the bulk of the box. And it's not like our law is enforced in all cases. You don't have to take my word for it. I'll show anybody a satellite photo and a survey from a California licensed engineer showing that every single inch of a new house that I appealed is built in a different location than the plan shows and was approved on appeal, every inch. It's almost two feet over the front setback. The city was notified of this a month before the final inspection. You can see with your own eyes if you don't trust a survey or a photo. We'll talk about these a little bit more if this passes. But it's a good example to show the implications of what appears to be a reduction in quality of living you guys are bringing with this resolution. As far as the design guidelines go, the roof shape is reviewed as part of that. But again, from the same project, let me show you the roof shape from the final plans and then the different one that got built on the fly, by the way. So, do the code and rules even matter? Not every voter is building a custom luxury home in R one foothills, but everyone can see that a building is not where its builders or the community development department claims that it is by law. So, how can any voter think that it's fair that they're forced to follow laws that affect them in a way that they don't like? This code change doesn't fix problems. It's gonna invite more of them. Also, if you're serious about speeding up projects, where is the data on time spent returning projects for corrections? Again, from the same project I mentioned, you can't believe the number of back-and-forth times this plan went just for simple entry-level corrections like you have to draw all the buildings on a piece of land or there should only be one total square footage listed on the plans or you can't build a wood burning chimney in the state of California for the last ten years. You can't ignore a four-foot drop-off on your land. You have to lower your top plate height and build with the land. And these are just some of the corrections. Every time the plan goes back and forth, people wait in line and there was no additional fee to incentivize being professional and getting it right the first time. Now, why are diligent people waiting in line to get their stuff through while improper plans are mulled over and over and over without any additional charge for the extra work? Doesn't make economic sense. Adding that fee and raising the fees to fully pay enough staff to churn through the plans would fix the problem almost instantly and backed up plans. So, where is that addressed here? I might have missed it. But how about a luxury fee for expediting plans for those who choose to pay it and a dedicated staff to speed up those high-end projects and raise revenue at the same time? And another very good question to ask is what candidate could say there for quality of Burbank living who would vote to pass this resolution? I mean, you didn't even take public comment before you started debating this tonight. Please don't pass this on or improve it before you send it on. Thank you. Good night.
There are no more callers in the queue.
Okay, well, there being no further public comments, I will declare the public comment period closed and the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments.
Thank you, Chair Gumbawa. Yes, I would like to make a few comments regarding the second-story, upper-story addition for a single-family dwelling. The top of the roof height of a single-family dwelling is still limited at thirty feet. So, in spite of increasing the top of the roof, top of the plate height, the roof height remains the same at thirty feet. Secondly, with this update, staff is proposing application of second-story stepbacks, which is basically plain break modulations along the second-story facade to give relief from the bulk that is being proposed and adjust the massing of the proposed addition. Additionally, the design-related compatibility regulations that have been proposed as a part of this zone text amendment would ensure design-related compatibility in terms of the roof form, exterior facade, so that the proposed addition doesn't look out of place and blends in with the existing architectural style of the dwelling. Regarding the data on time spent reviewing the projects, the code that we currently have is pretty nuanced. The time spent is a factor which is resultant from the nuanced code being explained to the applicant, the back-and-forth between the applicant and the planner, and the caseload each planner has, the project, number of projects each planner is working on. And that's the reason why the time spent on each project is, as it has been shown on the presentation, a little prolonged. Other than that, I don't know if Fred wants to chime in.
Thank you, Shipra. I think the other point or the last point that she made, I cannot understate, I believe, looking back at the old reports when the R one updates were put in place, is one of the selling points was that this would facilitate streamlining and faster processing of applications. And I can tell you, coming in the month after it was put in place and over the last four years, that it's actually been the contrary. There are, as you're noting here, just some editorial changes that we're proposing as well as some nuanced tweaks to plate heights, two feet, you know, allowing for single stories, which is what's encouraged as opposed to two stories, to go through the by right process and looking at all the projects through the lens of the neighborhood compatibility guidelines. So, when you look at all of that in totality, two things I think come to mind that I think Shipra's presentation pointed out and I wanted to emphasize and that is the easier and the clearer that the code sections are for an applicant to review, their designer to review, and the architect to review. And that same clarity being seen by the planner that's reviewing and providing that feedback means that you have both the designer and the person on the other side of the counter reviewing it on the same page. And what the reason we've been experiencing twelve-to-sixteen-month scenarios is not just caseload. Clearly, that has some effect, but more importantly, the fact that the code is not as clear as it should be has really affected it because we find ourselves many times in sometimes debating what the code interpretation should be or is. And many a times, planners find themselves having to bring them to the deputy city planner or myself as a city planner to get a final interpretation. And it's, I would say, there's more experiences of that happening on a project-by-project basis than I would, I could count on one hand. And so what that means to me is that when you start getting a lot of those situations and then we have to look back at the code. And that is what Shipra and the team within the planning division as well as actually in talking with our plan checkers. What you have in front of you is a culmination of all that effort. And it's not, you know, people at the top making these decisions. It's really kind of a frontline staff, the actual technicians working through this and actually getting feedback from designers. And what you have in front of you- And what you have in front of you is a culmination of that feedback. There's still opportunities for additional feedback from the community to the current Commenters' point between now and when it goes to council. But the changes that are being done now are a Phase 1, what I would call a Phase 1 update. And that is to really get a lot of the low-hanging fruit, where there's inconsistencies, addressed this process. And it's my belief, and like I said, I say that because the planners working on it are the ones that are working the projects on a day-to-day basis, that we could make some significant inroads in processing times without diluting the purpose and intent of the code, which is to address bulk and mass, and to have greater compatibility of new structures coming into a neighborhood so that they complement the neighborhood as opposed to create issues that, you know, some people would be concerned with that could detract against that character. So, with that said, I just wanted to make sure I brought that to the attention of the board and in a way to say that we hear the board, because this has been an issue of concern over the last couple of years that I've been here, as we've had appeals that come before the board or in situations where you hear it, we hear it, complaints about how long it's been taken to process applications. So, this code that's being put before the board for consideration and eventually in front of the council is intended to do just that, is to address it, address the concerns as far as clarity of code, ensuring that we preserve neighborhood character even with the changes that we're recommending. And in doing so, also help property owners and residents that are trying to process projects so that we don't run into situations, like the one example I recall, where someone was looking at doing an addition to their home in anticipation of a birth. And it took so long that the child was born before the remodel addition was approved. And, you know, to me, that's just not acceptable. So, that is why, an example, but a very, you know, what I would think of a very stark example of where, if the purpose of the code was to address neighborhood character and streamlining, it hasn't done that, so that's why it's in front of you as it's currently presented.
Thank you for those additional comments. Does the board have any questions for staff?
I do. I just have, it's a general question. Shipra, are roof-mounted air conditioners included in height restrictions? In height measurements, I should say?
Thank you for your question, Planning Board member. No, roof-mounted equipment such as an AC unit would not be considered while measuring height of a dwelling. But we do have provisions in our code which require screening of such equipment from the front street. It shouldn't be visible from the front street.
Thank you.
Mr. Gamboa, I have a question?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, Shipra. Thanks for the presentation. I just want to get a clarification. I saw some references to view on hillside development. And from prior experience, there was this confusion regarding what constitutes a view. Have you had any issues from, let's say, individuals who are applying in the hillside development area as to, well, how do you define a view? What is a view? Or what constitutes a view?
Thank you for your question, Planning Board member. So, in a hillside area, basically there are two views, upslope and downslope. The primary view is downslope view. And in absence of that, the primary view would be an upslope view. So, when a project comes in for a hillside development permit, the staff, the assessment the staff does is basically looking at the Google aerial view and seeing whether the project or the property has a downslope view or an upslope view. Whichever, if it has a downslope view, that is their primary view. And any addition that is going to get entailed within that HDP would be reviewed based off of that view. And secondly, if it doesn't have a downslope view, it has only the upslope view, that would be the primary view for the project.
Well, my question was more in reference to what constitutes a view? What is the definition of the word "view" as it's used in the code? Have you had any applicants come up and say, "Wait a minute, that's not a view," whether it's the applicant or maybe person who wants to challenge the development? Say, "Oh, well, that's not a view," or "that is a view." So, how was the word "view" defined? Or what's the general practice? Because I see that it's been addressed here in the hillside development permit section.
So, we don't have an actual definition of "view" within hillside area. But then, as I mentioned, when an applicant comes in, and yes, there have been back-and-forth with an applicant regarding where the primary view of the property is. And in that case, we bring the project to the staff meeting and the city planner and the director determines where the primary view is at. So, but the code does have, it does contain a section which talks about upslope and downslope view and how to determine the primary view. Views basically of the city or, you know, looking up the hill. That's how we've been interpreting it.
Yes, okay. I'm familiar with that part of the code. But I guess I just wanted to find out if you had instances where people were raising concerns about the definition of a view, or if there was a disagreement about what a view is. That's what was my question, because I wanted to find out if this is something that's going to be addressed in the future. Because it's been, it has come up many times, I'm certain, where a party wants to develop their house and then another one says, "Well, you know what? You're blocking my view." Well, a view of what? What is a view? I'm familiar with the downslope view and the upslope view and which one is the primary? If there is a downslope, then the upslope view is secondary, so it doesn't come into the equation, and so forth and so on. But I think that we need to do a little bit better job with the word "view" and have a better explanation of what constitutes a view. And that should be put in the code so that a person applying for a, and they're in the hillside development permit area, and they want to apply for some remodeling, then they better understand what their obligations are or if they can even do it. This is a view. This is what a definition of a view is. If you can see, is a view considered? Well, I can look out my front window and I can see the parked car on the street. Is that considered to be a view? If a view is something other than that, then people should know about that to eliminate some of the concerns. Now, as far as, I have another question about FARs. We've been back and forth. Is the current FAR .35 or .40?
It's .4.
.4, right? And people would be able to apply to some exemptions from the .4 FAR if they meet certain requirements. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, as far as the porch, when you were talking about the porch height, there, I think initially, I think, if I remember correctly, it was 12 feet at this point, correct? How did you arrive, not you, I don't mean you. You're just a representative now giving us the information. How did the consensus, how did you guys come up with that consensus, 12 feet? Why not 14? Why not 16? So, would you be able to tell me that?
Sure, I can begin. So, the 12 feet was arrived at because of all the past projects we've processed and looking at the average height of the front porch that were proposed in the past that were appropriate for the size of the dwelling. 12-feet height restriction was decided on.
And I can add, Board Member Atukanyan, that the porch height was also intended to align with the top of plate height that's allowed for that first floor at 12 feet, so that you'd have one consistent kind of height across that first level. The idea being that the intent of a porch and that type of a structure is really to kind of have a human scale to it and create a level of shelter and enclosure that doesn't overwhelm the front facade of the building. And as you saw from the example that Shipra showed in the drawing, that those two examples are actually the same project. The first example on the left is the example when it first came in. And the example on the right is when we worked with them to provide more of a front-entry treatment or a similar type of entry treatment that resulted in a project that had more a balanced approach as far as the front-entry with the architectural elements that were on the upper level as opposed to having the porch kind of overwhelm the front facade of the building. So, most of the typical design types that you see in the city have resulted in a porch that is similar and that the 12-foot height requirement would facilitate.
I appreciate that, but I guess my thing was, if I have a one-story structure, if the building is one-story, then you basically are bringing the porch up to 12 feet, let's say, which is all right, that's fine. But if you have a two-story structure, then a 12-feet porch may not, even though I'm going to refer back to the diagrams that I saw, I really prefer the one on the right, the one that's limited to 12 feet. I think it's more tasteful than the one that kind of goes all the way up. But I think there should be a little bit more flexibility. If someone is coming up with a two-story structure, that perhaps they should be allowed to go just a bit higher for the purpose of maybe, let's say, blending things in. Because that is one particular architectural style that we saw, the two diagrams. But if they have other elements involved in the front elevation, then perhaps they would need something higher. So, perhaps if it could be, we could say, you know, something to the effect that, okay, if you want to go a little bit higher, well, you know, go up to 14 feet or something to that effect to kind of give it, have it blend in better, maybe perhaps, to give them that flexibility to have it blend in better with a two-story structure versus a one-story structure. That was just my comment in reference to that. But, okay, and the there was another question that I had in reference to the attic, yes, the attic. What was the intent behind the floor? I didn't quite understand the differentiation between the four feet and now the proposed is five feet. So, what was? I kind of want to get some clarification on that.
Sure, Board Member. So, the reason why attic space was included is because of a term "structural flooring." So, currently, planning doesn't have a definition of what constitutes a structural floor. So, the way core reads today is that if someone were to have an attic space that exceeded height higher than four feet, so say it's four feet, six inches or five feet, and they propose a structural flooring along with that, the intent being that floor could be used for someone to actually move on, it could be habitable in future. In that case, it'll get included towards the FAR. So, in order to verify if someone is proposing a structural floor along with their attic space, we often refer to Building Department and we ask them to verify if this is structural flooring. Because if not, then the attic space won't count towards FAR. But if it is, then it would. So, a lot of times applicants would propose very high, seven-feet-high attic space and then call out that the flooring on the attic space is not structural. So, that way, we don't include that within the FAR calculation, but it does add to the mass and bulk of the house. But what we are proposing is that including all attic spaces that exceeds five feet in height with any floor surface, if you have an attic space such that, that you're proposing, that would count towards FAR. So, simplifying the code so that at planning level, we can review it and make our determination of whether or not to include it within FAR without referring to Building Department.
Board Member Atukanyan, if I can add to, just so that it's very clear is, what we found to be the case is it becomes a bit of a cat-and-mouse game with an applicant when they tell us, "Oh, you know what? It's not a structural floor." And, you know, I mean, I'm not ignorant to the fact that after we're gone and the permits have been finalized, it's very easy to retrofit and then put plywood on top and then make it structural. So, instead of playing the cat-and-mouse game and the guessing game, the idea was to basically allow them to do it and just set a height that five feet, that doesn't add to the bulk and mass. But it makes it a lot easier for the project applicant, the designer, to build out the project versus trying to kind of hit that sweet spot where we need the volume, but we're going to put drywall and beams that aren't structural, but that will cover the space. And then, you know, what happens after the fact when we're gone? So, it's best to just say, our approach was, let's raise the height, allow them to do it, and get out of the game of trying to guess whether it's a structural floor or not, so long as they stayed within that envelope.
So, basically, whether it's structural flooring or not, if it's anything more than five feet, then it's going to be included in the FAR. But if it's less than five feet, it will not be included in the FAR. Is that what, is that the correct assessment? Did I understand it?
Yes, Board Member. So, anything above five feet with any kind of floor will count towards FAR.
So, even if it's a non-structural flooring, the prior code said that, you know, if it's not structural flooring, you can do six feet, not a problem, we're not going to count it in the FAR. But the revised version is, if it is non-structural flooring or structural, doesn't matter, the limitation is the height, not the flooring, that's going to define whether it's going to be included in the FAR or not. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. Okay, Mom, thank you.
Are there any further questions for staff? Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair Atukanyan.
Thank you. I just, right away, I just want to thank staff for preparing this. I was on this board two years prior, and I fought, I thought I was fighting as hard as I could to eliminate the mess that we got ourselves into. And I indicated back then that this is very difficult to get your arms around. And I think Mr. Atukanyan came on a year or two later as we brought it to a vote. But it's, you know, you got two documents here. You got the Property Development Standards, which really is kind of the Bible here, and then you got the Design Review part of this. And in reading both, there seems to be a lot of contradiction. So, I have a lot of questions. And most of them stem from the staff report on Exhibit 5 and 6. So, question, in today's world, you can build .35 without going through designer review. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is that going to change?
Uh, no.
Okay. And in today's world, you can you can build, you can add on to your house 500 square feet or less and not have to go through compatibility design review.
That's correct.
And that's what's killing the department, is the compatibility design review. So, what I don't understand is, if you can build .35 brand-new, and that's on a 6750 lot, that's 2,363 square feet. But let's just say you have a 900-square-foot house, you add 600 square feet to it to bring it to 1,500 square feet. So, that's less than 2,363. 1,500 square feet, you're going through design review and you're in the queue for 19 months. I don't get that. Why don't we just say .35 new or .35 addition, no design review? And that's one thing I don't understand. Then it talks about, if you tear down 50% of your house, it's considered new construction, right? new construction, right?
Yes.
And then .35 again, you can build .35 and have to go through design review if you tear it down 50%?
Yes, if you tear down 50%, and if you limit your new construction at .35 and 3,000 square feet, you don't have to go through single-family. But if you exceed
.35.
.35, you will have to.
And what if, what if it's a two-story house? Is it still .35?
It's still .35.
Okay, all right. I agree with that. Yes.
I just wanted to add a clarification. Currently, what we're proposing is that any one-story home should be allowed by right. So with proposed standards, if someone were to demolish their existing house and it's a one-story house and rebuild it to say at .4 FAR, they would be exempt from design review. But we are also proposing additional design standards to ensure that they incorporate 360-degree architectural compatibility.
Thank you. And then on page six, it says, require compliance with design guidelines, neighborhood compatibility regulations for additions remodeling, resulting that the project incorporate exterior roof that matches the existing architectural style of the house. So let's say I have a funky house, right? I have this kind of southwestern, Spanish kind of, but the house is actually traditional, but someone in the 70s or 80s kind of did this weird design. And I want to bring it back to Cape Cod. I want to bring it back. But in reading this, it says that you have to maintain the same architectural appearance. So if I wanted to take off the Spanish roof and turn it back into a traditional house of which it was, I wouldn't be able to do that?
Is this a one-story house we are talking about?
It's a two-story house. Either, either, either or. If you wanted to take the shell, not the structure, but just take the shell off the house and take it from Burbank Blah to Spanish or modern farmhouse or the Craftsman, can you do that?
So for a two-story home undergoing whole-house demolition, wherein the roof is gone and the architectural style is going to change, that would have to go through a single-family permit. If they are above .35 FAR.
If they're less than that, though, Chair, Vice Chair, the one thing I think you're asking is
I'm just changing, all I want to do is just change the appearance of the house. I'm not changing the structure. I'm just changing the appearance of the house.
So Shipra, wouldn't in that particular case, applying the 360-degree architecture be the scenario? So in other words, you could do what you're proposing to do. You just have to make sure you have one consistent design theme in the resulting structure. So after you bring it back down to the, as you said, from the blah to the Cape Cod style, it would just have to be the 360-degree architecture. The other provision that is written in and Shipra is more of an expert than me in this because she deals with it on a daily basis is the one example we used was we had kind of a minimal traditional bones of a structure. And then we had these appendages that were being added on as an addition. But the additions were kind of a mishmash of design types that were being tacked onto the building so that there was really no, there was inconsistency in a design theme. That's not to say you couldn't have different roof forms. It's just that the finishes, the materials and, and the way the roof forms were coming together looked like it was a hodgepodge kind of, you know, half thought of additions onto the building. So those are the kind of things that applying the design review and the neighborhood compatibility would just ensure that we're still looking at the project within the limitations and timeframes, but it wouldn't trigger single-family, that which is big, a big difference is single-family, now we're talking notification, we're talking additional review above and beyond what it would go through if it was an addition of 700 square feet or less and it met those other requirements or was a one-story. But we were just saying when we get into a back and forth with an applicant to say, well, what are you using to evaluate my project? We could refer them to what's already been approved by the city, which is the neighborhood compatibility guideline.
But what you just said, modulation and, and the boxy, the, the look of the house, that's all in the development standards, the property development standards.
There is, there is some language in the guidelines themselves that go beyond the standards that provide some guidance when it comes to just overall finishes, replacement of windows, those kind of.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the the mass and the bulk, which is what, you know, we came here for mansionization, right? You used to build on 60% of your lot and people were building large houses. So we started this process with mass bulk, which we tackle through the property development standards. And then somehow, some way, we got into the very subjective design review and, and we'll get into that, but just So as I continue to read exhibit A, the exterior design of all new additions and remodels that are exempt from the single-family development process shall match the architectural style of the main dwelling in terms of building forms, materials, colors, finishes and doors. Again, so does that mean you can't change your front door? I mean, it, it, it calls out, it says architectural style main dwellings in terms of building forms, materials, colors, exterior finishes, roof forms, and isn't that a little bit much that we're, we're kind of got our finger in? You know, of what we want?
I think to this point, over the last four years, as the staff has looked at it, there's been quite a bit of flexibility on replacement of doors and the finish. I think where we've run into problems is not someone wanting to add, you know, greater design detail to their project and make it more custom. I think the one thing where we've kind of been at, at a bit of an impasse with applicants is where you have a really clear understanding of what the architecture of the existing house is and the addition leaves something to be desired in the sense of it becomes very limited in what they're putting. So maybe there's a higher level of detail in the finishes of the existing house and the addition becomes less of that. And the idea being that to have the discussion with them through the neighborhood compatibility and design guidelines to be able to say, you know, you're complying with bulk and mass, you're complying with the requirements to build out the envelope of what you want. The question is, let's look at having consistency of design across the whole building, incorporate those design features that you're wanting to preserve as part of the existing house with the addition, but have just one consistent design as opposed to what tends to happen is we have things where, like, let's say, an addition, where there's a high level of detail in the, in the existing and the addition is, leaves something less than that when it's built.
So it talks about like windows, the, if keeping the, the, the style of the window. So if you're adding on to the, to the house and let's say the front of the house, you have the old 1970 aluminum windows, does that mean you have to put the old aluminum windows in the back of the house?
No, I don't think that would be the case. I think the, I think the argument would be if you have, let's just say, multi-panel windows and you're looking to match the design of that with something similar at the back, it doesn't get to the point of saying you, you can't do wood, you can't do vinyl, you can't do this. It's more just the design style as opposed to the finish.
Well, what I'm hearing from planner to planner to planner, it, it changes. Some, some are more specific and letter to the law. And then some are, like you said, understandable. So that's kind of what I'm getting at is it gets very subjective from planner to planner. And the, the big knock that I've been hearing through the years is and I'm sure that you hate it because you want consistency, is that from day to day, you could get a different story from a different planner. So I'm trying to, I'm looking through this and it you could see where one planner might say, well, no, it says that right here specifically. But yet, when you apply a little bit of logic to it, it, it could change.
Yeah, and we understand that. Yeah, I think the one thing in the past that's been a little problematic too in the process is that this whole code update that occurred and the a lot of what was getting caught, so to speak, within that review process was putting the planners in a position where every project was turning into kind of its own mini single-family special development review process as opposed to giving more flexibility to work with the designer. The guidelines are just that, they provide that flexibility. But, you know, it doesn't get into the level of detail of limiting finishes, but it does, it's, it's a document that at least allows both the party presenting the project and the planner looking at it to be looking at the same document when they're, when they're discussing what we're talking about from a design standpoint. So not to say that, you know, we have to be in agreement, but I'm saying at least there's a document in front of them that they're looking at as opposed to you know, not having that as an option available to both parties.
And then just to repeat, whole-house demolition, single-story, two-story, .35, you can build without going through design review?
.35 and 3,000 square feet grows floor area limit and you can build by right. Yes, yes, .35.
.35?
Yes.
Yeah, 3,000 square feet would be design review.
Above 3,000 square feet would be design review. Currently, if they are at .35 and at 3,000 square feet, no more than that.
Okay, because the lot size. I got you. Okay. The design review and neighborhood compatibility, single-family development. So I'm looking at the the book here and it says, instead of creating a design review process, and while the statement leads to believe that we're not creating a design review process, if you look at D7, it says design review six times on the, on one page. If you look at the, the design single-family home guide, on page seven, D7, six times it says, design review, design review, design review. And yet, we're saying instead of creating design review, we have created design review in, in I mean, we have our hand in just about everything, doors, windows, trim, paint, you know. So does anyone realize that, that it says design review here?
Yeah, it's in, actually in A, in A purpose, it says, it says, "Design review by city staff is intended to promote high-quality design, which will be achieved with well-crafted and maintained buildings, landscaping, high-quality building materials and well-executed details."
But, but, but the paragraph above says, you know, the purpose of the competitive review, instead of creating design review. But we have created a design review. In, in, in one page, it says, we're not creating design review, but yet we have it six times on one page.
Yeah, no, these guidelines are intended to provide that guidance as opposed to a prescribed design review, maybe as, as I would understand it, which would be, you go to before a board, have them critique your, your project. And these are intended to guide both the applicant and the, and the planner when they're reviewing the project. But I, I understand.
Yeah. And then, and this was, you know, you weren't here for this. It was quite hysterical to me. Please explain to me the front garage situation versus building, having a garage in the back of the house and in the front of the house. And I looked through here and it says that you can do it under certain circumstances, but it's really not clear. So if, if two neighbors on your block have a garage in the front, it's okay? Or is it five neighbors? Or is it 10 neighbors?
It's 40%. 40% of the block, block face, the houses on there should have a front-facing garage. In that instance, the subject lot can have a front-facing garage as well.
But why? I mean, when they built these little houses in the 20s and 30s, it was a design flaw. Some of the most expensive homes that sell in Burbank, some of the best neighborhoods, all of your hillside, all of Toluca Woods, Valley, Maple, Pass Avenue, Priscilla Lane, Clyburn, they all have the garages at the front. And somehow, we got off to this crazy thing that this is Burbank, this is, this is charming to have the garage in the back. And I don't understand why if someone, you know, if we're trying to be green, right? If we're being green, wouldn't you want everything under one roof? So now you have to pour two separate foundations, one for the garage, one for the house. Now you have to, you have to frame the garage, frame the house. You have to roof the garage, roof the house. And you took away green space in the yard. I don't understand that. If we're trying to be more green and better use of land and and just the ease of pulling in and out. If you have two, if you have one car in the driveway, that car has to move in order to get the other car out if the garage is in the back. So I don't understand why we're forcing people because they don't have 40. If you only have two people on your block that has the garage in the front, you can't build a house with a garage in the front, that makes no sense to me. And for the reasons that I just specified, it's, it's not good for the environment, we're taking building materials away from, from other people that need it, especially in today's world where it's so expensive and there's a lack of building materials. But yet, we got off on this tangent that you have to build your garage in the back and that makes no sense to me. And the most, this is what I do for a living, right? This is, I do, I sell houses every day for 21 years and the most desirable houses are the ones with the garages in the front. Just it's better use of land, it's, it's ease of coming and going. And I don't understand, I mean, that's one thing I think we need to change. Is i- if, if someone has the ability to build the garage in the front and wants to do so, okay, no big deal. We, we have a million of them in Burbank. It's not like a design, a weird design. We have tons of them in Burbank. Burbank Hillside has many. So that's the other thing I don't understand.
Vice Chair, just to clarify, so we're not proposing to make that change, but you're saying if we're, if we're looking at making changes to the R1, that that's something that should be delved into?
I really do.
Sure.
I mean, a- again, if someone can explain to me in a sensible way why we have the garages in the back and that's, and we're forcing people to do that, I'd love to listen, but I have not heard one sensible argument other than that's Burbank, it's charming. And it's not. It's, it's not.
And, and just to clarify, you can have the garage in the front, but it has to be set in 10 feet if you don't have 40% of the block.
Sure.
So you still can have it in the front and have it attached to the home. Not, you don't necessarily have to have the garage detached and in the rear.
If you have 40%, though.
But it's still can be attached to the home, but this has to be set in 10 feet. So it has to be an offset that you can have, it can be attached to the home.
If you have 40%, right? That's what I was told. If 40% of the houses on your block have the garage in the front, then you may do so. And that's why I asked, because if you look at the design guidelines, it's not clear.
So Shipra, just to clarify, there's, there's two scenarios, right? There's the, there's the ability to build one at less than the 10-foot offset. If there's a scenario where you have 40% of the properties on your block having a similar configuration with a front, attached front garage. And then there's the, the other scenario, which is actually currently, I think that Scott was mentioning, where you are allowed to build an attached garage that's attached to the house, front-facing, but we require a 10-foot offset. And I think the example of that one, Vice Chair, was most recently the appeal that we had where it was offset 10 feet, but it had a basement, but that, that was the offset. But, but I do understand what you're saying as far as the prototypical type of garage that you've seen.
So, so are you saying that if there's a 10-foot setback, you can build the garage in, by right in the front?
Yeah, and we'll double-check, but I believe that it allows you to have a garage with entry from the front connected to the house, but the front of the facade of the house has to be set close to the street.
And I saw that, but it's very unclear. And I'm not pointing fingers, but our staff person just said, no, it's 40%. So that's why I'm saying there, we have to get on the same page because
Yeah, I think, and I apologize, I think, and Shipra, you can clarify, but we're talking about two different scenarios, though.
Yes, so if someone were to come in and propose Yes, so if someone were to come in and propose um front-facing garage flush with the existing house, in that case, um, uh, they need to provide, the CDD can make a uh determination that that can happen if at least forty percent of the houses on the block face have front-facing garages that are not setback. But um, garages, they can still propose a front-facing garage, only thing is, uh, it has to be set back ten feet from the front facade of the existing house.
That I understand. So if you are building a brand-new house and there's no other garages in the front, but if you set yours back ten feet, you can do it?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Um, on page D eight of the single-family home compatibility, design review, whatever. Number F, limitations on building size, height, and setback. Where a project is subject to neighborhood compat- compatibility review, the director or his or her designated may impose more restrictive size and height limitations and may require greater setbacks required for yards than those specified in this article where specific unusual site circumstances. So again, it where it it gets subjective depending on who's looking at this. Why wouldn't the property development standards always prevail? You have setbacks there. You have height, mass, bulk, FAR. So why would we? Why would uh someone have the ability to impose more restrictive size and height?
And Shipra, correct me if I'm wrong, but i- in follow-up to that section of F, it it does list the four different scenarios where where this may be merited, right, in the sense of irregular configurations or flag lots. Uh, buildings that are on a steep slope or below a street, lots containing topographical features or other um onsite, you know, trees and slopes that may merit the need to do that as opposed to causing issues with uh, you know, projections on on hillsides.
Right.
So not to say that that what I'm saying is.
But those examples, those examples are in your property development standards of the of those scenarios. So why would we? Why would we have to impose this more, is what I'm saying?
I guess it's for the neighborhood compatibility, because if you look at bullet point number four, it says that when in case of larger lots within the same neighborhood, they would be entitled to have a bigger house because they can have higher square footage because of the larger lot. In order to restrict that and make it compatible with other smaller houses within the neighborhood, probably this was put in place to um, uh, give that flexibility to preserve the neighborhood character.
Again, another point of contention I had five years ago, i- i- if you bought a house and paid the money for a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot, shouldn't you be able to go point three-five, even if you're over three thousand square feet? I mean, your mass and bulk and size is all in proportion to your lot size. So when you're looking at a house that's, you know, six thousand square feet on a six thousand square foot lot, yeah, it looks enormous. But if you take that same house, it's on a fifteen thousand square foot lot, I I I I I I just don't agree that 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 same person should have to fall under the same guidelines because the the lot warrants a larger house. So anyways, those those are my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Of course, thank you for those questions. Um, is there any other questions that came up? Uh, Board Member Altikian, your hand's still up, but I think that's from last time, right?
No, no, I just clicked it on right now.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
I I I think just, I mean, I I could incorporate this in during deliberation, but I think this entire process, as uh Mr. Rizotti alluded to, was to address bulk and mass. And uh, I'm gonna avoid going into why this process was even initiated. Uh, at the time, we were having, well, actually, I'm gonna go into it, I'm gonna put it out there. At the time, we had some uh individuals and specific groups who were basically uh appealing uh almost every project. Uh, I wouldn't say almost every project, but all projects that had uh the the ownership last name ended with IAN or YAN. So uh, this this, I believe that's how this whole thing came about. Oh, we're gonna, we're the bulk and mass. And then the introduction of these building uh uh guidelines, I mean, design guidelines will will come in. And and uh, so if if and at the time, I clearly remember the discussion where I asked a question, well, there was a group of thirteen or fourteen, I said, are these guidelines for people to to uh adopt if if they are able to or can? Or are these mandatory for them to be able to obtain a permit? So I couldn't get an answer to the question. But apparently, it's something where it could hold people back from getting a permit. Uh, so and 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 the point three-five was, I think, started at that point, you know, the thing. So coming to the point three-five FAR and the three thousand square foot limitation. When we take into consideration lot sizes in in Burbank, you know, about the sixty-seven hundred feet or seven thousand square feet, majority of them, that's where I believe they are. Uh, Mr. Rizotti, correct me if if that's not correct.
Sixty-seven fifty is about the average.
Yeah, somewhere there, sixty-seven hundred, seven thousand feet, somewhere right, right in there is the average. We're looking at a twenty-three-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot home, I'm using round numbers. So uh, and 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 now we have the state saying, hey, you know what? You can build another structure on your lot without any consideration for the FAR, you put another eight hundred square foot there.
Thousand, thousand.
Well, well, that's right, depending on where you are, the, I mean, county, city, whatever. So basically, you can just tack on another eight hundred square foot of building, but you're gonna add it on as separate, but yet we're suffocating or putting all these limitations on a person, a building, something that's a little bit bigger, so they don't have to do that, so they could enjoy a yard. So they could have some yard left over to be able to, you know, gather, have a barbecue. So uh, you see, I I digressed. And I forgot the question that I was going to ask you, Shipra, but I think, you know what? I think we're all better off because of it. So at this point, that's one of the issues that I have. The entire idea of design guidelines, because they're not really guidelines. They're basically uh uh complicating the city's work, they're complicating the architect's work, the owner's work, uh, and the neighbor's work, e- everyone's work. I mean, everybody is now confused, not to the point where uh, they don't know what they're saying, they're confused because everyone is interpreting it in a manner in which obviously best suits them. Hence, creating all the issues. I think this is where we're starting, but anyway. I uh,
I I think, I I think this is where we can skip, we can go over to deliberations at this point.
Yes, 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 yes.
I have one more question.
Vice Chair Rosati, yeah.
I have one more question. I asked this question five years ago, and I never got an answer. I'm gonna ask this question tonight to see if we if we do have an answer. What are we considering a mansion? What size home is a mansion? Do we, do we ever, have we ever def- defined that?
Uh, you know, I'm not, I don't have the context of what what, how the question was asked last time. I guess what we know now is that we have a limit of point four for development within the city, based on the R one standard. So if it's anything beyond that, that that the city was concerned with as far as being built, and whether it was under the moniker of mansionization or whatnot, uh, it was a bulk and mass that exceeded that prescribed amount. So I guess that's what I would, I would look at it less to say, what is a mansion versus more? What did the city decision-makers and and the community at that point in time, which we now have to abide by, uh, set as a maximum threshold of something that would, they would be willing to consider in the city, and I guess it's point four? With with special development review or point three-five and three thousand without it?
Just if I if I may, just throwing out for a second, I mean, I come from Connecticut, the Gold Coast. Um, we kind of defined it as number of bedrooms. So anything that was more than four bedrooms was considered getting into the mansion um size, but that's, again, that's the Northeast. We call them McMansions, but. Oh, and if if I could, just on 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 that note, uh, and this may be a question more from the Building Department. Um, when you're talking about structural floor, to me, that's something that you put something on and it'll hold it up. Um, we're going to a five-foot ceiling, how does that, um, how do we regulate it being used as a bedroom or as a um, as a bedroom? Now that you've grown, now that you've uh bumped the height a little bit.
Sure, if if someone were to come in and propose an attic space, that is five feet and beyond with a floor, uh, then that would count towards FAR. Per our discussion with the Building and Safety, Safety Department for attic spaces, any space above five feet, exceeding five feet, they would consider within a habitable space for an attic. And that's why we based it off, based it off of um their interpretation and uh decided to go with five feet.
Mr. Gamble, I have a quick question.
Please, go for it.
Uh, uh, Shipra or anyone else who wants to chime in on this, have have you cons- are these second-story setbacks that were uh, talked about and and incorporated in the design review process? Are we not, w- w- we're not touching any of that, are we?
No, we're not.
So so the, all those are still in place?
They are, and they would be applicable with the changes we are proposing. Uh, they would be applicable for all upper-story additions or two-story homes.
All right. Well, l- let me ask this question then. Do you find that, I mean, you've seen a a whole, I mean, a a lot of plans, a a lot of proposed structures that that you review. Do you find that bulk and mass is is more, I shouldn't say even more, it it's it's prevalent and existing when you have a two-story structure that does not have that setback, does not have that articulation? Is that, is that your view or 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 is that your, is, uh, okay, is that your view?
Um, per the code, the modulations have been put in place to ensure that with addition of bulk, the massing gets adjusted such that the building doesn't look big or, you know, doesn't look out of place. So yes, articulation along the upper-story facade does provide a respite in terms of uh visual breaks and creates a sense of transition in the height.
So would you agree if I said that I can have a six thousand square foot structure? And if I use, apply proper articulation and setbacks for the second story of my structure, that's not gonna be as bulky or it's not gonna be as massive as if I had that six thousand square foot structure and I had a kind of like a a linear wall just going up thirty-five feet or thirty feet, uh, would you agree with that?
Uh, de- depends on how articulation is defined. Um, sure, if if there are plain break, it's all speculation at this point without a concrete definition of how second-story modulations are being proposed. Um, the way we have right now in the current code, it provides for every scenario where you can provide some sort of setback for the second story, you know, to be setback from the facade of the first story and uh give visual respite, um, if the building is big.
Right, basically, it softens, softens the the bulk and the mass and 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 basically spreads, spreads the structure. Uh, spreads the structure out a bit so that it visually, it's not imposing. Considering what we have in the code right now. Forget that, I I I know you started with the word, it could be speculation, I understand. And I should have clarified and said, considering the actual code that we have right now for second-story setbacks, it would soften the structure up and it's not going to be as bulky as if it was a completely linear wall. Would that, would you agree with that?
Yes, the modulations that we have in place, the code, uh, provides for a better transition for uh two-story homes.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions for staff or shall we go into deliberations? Okay, I think I'll now declare the public hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board? Vice Chair Rosati.
You know, since we put this into play, we've heard from the public. And 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 it, if they're just adding simple additions onto their house, it's turned into a major production. And it's decimated our planning department, made permit wait times fifteen, eighteen, nineteen months. And it cost our homeowners thousands of dollars with plans, revisions, and holding the property and paying mortgage on it while you wait to get your your permit. Um, and again, what we were told was we wanted to stop mansionization by eliminating bulk and size. And we did that i- i- per Mr. Altikian. Through our property development standards, we have regulated and controlled the height, the mass, the setbacks, the modulation, FAR, and bulk. But then somehow we got into this whole design review element and neighborhood compatibility, which created a lot of confusion uh, in our planning department. And further, what what really makes no sense to me is the example I gave is you can build, you can tear down a house and build a brand-new house at point three-five, and you don't have to go through design review. But if you take a a nine-hundred-square-foot house and add six hundred square feet, bring it to fifteen hundred square feet at point two-two FAR, well under point three-five, you have to go through design review. What has bogged down the planning department is the process of compatibility and the subjective nature of it. Again, it was bulk and mass that we're concerned about. And that's controlled through our development standards. What I want to propose is that if you're remodeling your home or building a new home, point three-five or under, single-story or two-story, no design review, neighborhood compatibility. Which is exactly what we have right now if you're building a brand-new house. Just, it'll streamline everything if you stay under that point three-five. I also want to propose r- right now, on a sixty-seven fifty lot in Burbank, at point three-five, the maximum house you could build is twenty-three-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet. In today's world, especially with COVID, people working from home, people need more room. So people are adding ADUs. A thousand square feet by right. Same with the investors, for them to turn a buck, the max they could build is tw- you know, twenty, they can go point four, but they don't want to do the compatible compatible review, so they're going point three-five, and then they're adding an ADU. Again, I propose we bring everything under one roof. You're talking three hundred square feet. You don't have to take up green space. You don't have to build a second structure, a foundation, a roof, taking away building materials. Taking away resources that are badly needed at the expense of another structure. at the expense of another structure. And I propose that we move point three five to point four oh. And what, what is point four oh on a 6750 lot? It's 2,700 square feet. It's 337 feet bigger than point three five. And again, you can add a thousand square feet in, with an ADU by right. So why not move it to point four oh? It eliminate much of the ADU issues. And I think, again, 2,700 square feet is not a mansion. You know, when I think of mansions, I'm thinking houses that are certainly above 5,000 square feet. And mansions are usually 10, 15, 20,000 square feet. So 2,700 square feet in today's world where you got two people working from home, children, dual offices, I don't think that's out of line. But the one thing I want you to remember is we still have our development standards that control the height setbacks, bulk and FAR. And, and we're already doing it at point three five on a new build. Anyways, I think that would dramatically, we've heard our staff say it. I think that would dramatically streamline the process and give the residents what they need. And, and I don't think it's a far stretch from where we're currently at. Thank you.
Board member Altikanian.
Thank you, Chair Gamboa. I, I started saying this and the, the bulk and the mass that, that we're trying to control, I think the setbacks applied and, and adopted for the second story of the structure addresses bulk and mass in, in a big way. And I think that particular adjustment that was made was the, was, was what was needed. And I think everything else that came along with that was unnecessary. Because at the end of the day, the simpler the code, the simpler the process with less, I guess, doors to open, less windows to open to go through in order to make something happen. We need to make, we need to simplify it. And to simplify it, I think, going back to what we had before all this process started would be far, it, it would be very advantageous to the citizens. It would be advantageous to, to the city. Because the city would not have to spend all those resources trying to interpret, trying to accommodate this and accommodate that, or explain this and explain that. So a simple process. I'm, I'm, I'm a proponent of maintaining those setbacks for the second story. Where you take away this quote unquote mansion, the bulk, where you have a building staring down at you. You know? And if we maintain those setbacks for the second story, side setbacks, front setbacks, I'm not only talking about front setbacks, I'm talking about side setbacks and front setbacks for the second story. I think that is, that, that solves the problem of bulk and mass. And if we, as, as I was going to propose it, but Mr. Rosati, I guess, was reading my mind, just simplify it, point four, period. We already, and, and, and when you reduce the top mass, you reduce the actual mass of the building and you have kind of a one-story building that you're looking at with, with some, you know, with setback second story addition. So and the scenario where you, where you have a, a smaller structure on a property to subject that owner when the ID was bulk and mass and to say, okay, well, for them to add another 600 square feet or 800 square feet, now they're at 1,800 square feet, let's say, or they're like 2,100 square feet, to, because to say that, well, you know what, we want to control the bulk and mass of this 2,100 square foot structure, it almost sounds ridiculous. So I mean, it's, it's nonsensical to, to put ourselves in that position where we say, you know what, if you're here, you want to add 800 square foot to your building and your building is 1,240 square feet, so you're going to end up with 2,040 square feet. Oh, wait a minute, you're going to have to go through this entire process. It's just, it just does not bode well. And it's not, and we're not providing a good service to, to the citizens. That, I mean, at the end of the day, that's our job. That's how I see my job anyway. I wouldn't call it a job. That, that's how I see my role, since we don't get paid. It's not a job. So I, I think the, the focus should not be whether every single element of the structure matches every other. The example of what if the structure did not conform to the, to the, to the other houses to begin with? So now, when you add more to it, now you're adding more of the quote unquote non-conforming design that it doesn't blend into the rest of the, the, the street. So are you going to tell that owner, no, you can't build this? Or now part of your house has to blend in? Or how does that owner overcome that obstacle? Let's say the house is, is one-off on the street and they want to add to that house. Under the current guidelines, well, it's incompatible. It's incompatible to begin with. All right. Well, let's, let's have more incompatibility. Let's add to the incompatibleness of this particular house by making the rest of the house match everything else. So, but I think the, the, this, this is a very, very, very good start. And the other question that I just remembered that I was going to ask was, what were some of the other issues and complaints that you were presented with? Maybe it was not as frequent, but it was still important enough for it to be addressed. Because God knows, I, I, I don't want to wait another four and a half years to revisit this issue because I'm sure some other issues are going to come up. I think we need to do this, do this a bit faster. I mean, I understand the constraints. I understand the, the constraints of trying to, not everything's going to get done in one day. But I think this was somewhat of a problem of our own creation. And at the time, I, I recall Mr. Rosati and I, and I believe another board member, were not really, we didn't really, were not really convinced of the, the actual structure of how this was being designed. And I don't mean a house design. I mean, how this design guidelines were being brought in and incorporated and, and applied to, to, to construction. So we all understand, if you take a look at a house, we all know that, hey, you know what, does it match the rest of the neighborhood? Yes, no? And, and for everything to match and be, be the same, it is not, you know, is not as appealing as we think it may be. It's, it's nice to have some variations, of course, some differences. So you don't think you're walking through a cookie cutter house, you know, like how developers did, you know, 15 houses on both sides of the streets, they all kind of look the same. I don't think we want that. I don't think the, the citizens want that. And, and, and all that, as you know, a house is, is one's castle. So one wants to have their flexibility to be able to design or, or build their castle. So and they're the ones who are going to live in it. And they're the ones who paid for it. And for us to come in now and say, well, no, you have to do make it this. No, that has to be done. That has to be done. And by the end of the day, with all these restrictions and so forth and subjectivity, adding to the confusion, it also leaves a bad taste in the mouth of this, the, the individual who's trying to, you know, build something for himself, his family and so forth. So there's, there's, there's a lot of considerations. I mean, we kind of get caught up in, oh, well, you know, someone said this, we got to do that. Someone said, let's try and keep it simple. Simple approach, simple numbers, logical numbers that make sense so that there's no, we, we don't want to treat a person who has a 7,000 square foot lot differently than someone who has a, a 4,000 square foot lot differently than someone has a 7,000 square foot lot. I mean, I mean, a 17,000 square foot lot. The, the guidelines or, or the, the code should be uniform across all these different lots. A 3,000 square foot structure makes no sense if someone bought a 21,000 square foot lot and says, okay, well, if I do 3,000 square feet, then I'm going to be able to do it without any design review if it's point three five. It makes, that makes no sense to do that. But if we say, listen, your house has to fit in the rest of the neighborhood, your house has to blend in the rest of the neighborhood, doesn't exact, have to be exactly like the house next door. But when we look at your house, it's got to be nice. It's got to be compatible in design, in, in elements and so forth and so on. Compatibility does not mean exact. I digress. I mean, I, I, maybe I'm saying too much, but this was a long time coming. A lot of complaints. I just got a phone call two days ago, actually. A friend complaining that they were in the process for the 24th month. 24th month. Sorry, I apologize. 21st month. I miscalculated. January of this year, they had, they, they, they had basically had, oh, supposedly it was a go. Then suddenly all these other issues came up. My advice to him was, okay, talk to your planner, talk to your building guy, whoever it is, go sit down and talk to them and find out what's going on. They were, they were in the dark. They didn't understand it. And, and this is nothing new. I think this is the experience that, that we've, we've been having for the last several years. So I know this is somewhat long, but I think this is extremely important. It affects a lot of people. It affects their lives. The level of anxiety, the, the anxiousness, the, the weight, not to mention as, as, as Mr. Rosati said, my friend was making two mortgage payments. I mean, this takes a toll on someone. It, it really does. And it adds a great deal of stress on, on not only the person, but everyone around them. Because they're under this high stress. And, 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 and the city staff is under high stress. I'm sure you, no one wants this. So I think the answer is, so long as we are addressing bulk and mass, I think the, we need to be very flexible with the remainder of the code. Or if it was up to me, I would just completely throw out this design review portion. But to maintain some of the elements of the design review portion to give some, some type of a, a guidance to the developer, the owner, and our staff to say, okay, well, these are the things that we're going to generally follow. And if they're not guidelines, let's not call them guidelines because that's misleading. A guideline is, I'll take it or leave it. So it's, it's, it's a great step in the right direction. Again, I have to say, we're, we're making some progress here with some of the changes that are being made where providing better flexibility. But I think the core of the issue is the subjective portions. The, the numbers, everyone understands numbers. Five feet from such and such is fine and so forth, so long as it make, it makes sense. Everyone can agree with that. But when, when we come to the subjective portion of, of all this, that's where we're running into the problems. That's where it's taking so long. And, 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 and it's not a, it's not a, a criticism when, when Chris Rosati said that, oh, well, you know, you go to different planners, you get different answers. And that's going to be completely true. You expect that. Because the way it's written, people interpret it different ways. I mean, look at lawyers, right? They, they read the code and, and, and you get different answers from different lawyers. Why? Because it's open to interpretation. So we interpret it. So the less interpretation that is required, less interpretation, simpler, is going to streamline the process. And if, at the end of the day, if it's bulk and mass, then I think we've addressed bulk and mass with the setbacks of the second story, side setbacks and, and, and front setbacks. Thank you.
Board member Monaco, or would you like to add anything? I don't, Mr. Rosati wants to go next.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern on these things, and I, and I agree, you know, we walk a thin line because I used to say in commercial real estate finance, you walk a thin line between finance and interior decorating sometimes. But I mean, I, I agree in terms of the bulk and mass issues that you raised. But now how do you stop somebody from going, I'm, I'm in the Magnolia Park area. How do you stop somebody from building a house that looks like a gigantic sugar cube with, with holes in there?
I can tell you how. You cannot build that house because you have to have a second story setback and modulation. It's in the, it's in the property development standards. You cannot build that house. And that's what we have to hang our hat on. Cause that's what we use to control mass, bulk and size. So you cannot build that sugar cube house. I mean, we, let me, let me, let me paint a picture for you. We've gone so far and the caller mentioned something, the only caller we had, he mentioned two things. We've gone so far over the edge here that if you took a, a 1930 Tudor house with the 17 and 12 roof, Burbank, right? Charming Burbank. And try to replicate that house and build it again? You could not do that in Burbank. You couldn't have that Cape Cod. You couldn't have that roof line because of our current standards. That's how far we've gone. So if you built just a 1,600 square foot house with a 17 and 12 roof line, you couldn't do it. So what we've done is, and we, and we have the, the property development standards here. So we couldn't build that 1930s house that we all think is so charming in Burbank. That's how far we've gone. And the second thing that the caller mentioned, that if you're building a, a really nice house, or I don't know what the, the terms were, if, if you were wealthy or something like that, that you should pay an extra fee to, to, to get a step up in line. No. No extra fee. You get in line, you get in line with everyone else. You, you, you don't pay a fee to step two feet in front of somebody else. So I, I don't agree with that. I just wanted to make reference to that because I know the caller called in. So.
So I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing in this group is that we're, the design review, because I'm also not a fan of design review. There's, I mean, there's just no accounting for taste. And like, you know, everyone's got their own, you know, vision of what their home might look like or what they want, what new architecture styles are in vogue or what new amenities are in vogue. I mean, how many sunken living rooms do you see these days? Vice Chair Rosati, you know, so it's, it's, things will change. And I think it's, it's, it's nice to be able to adapt with it. So I, I, I would be on board with, you know, eliminating design review. My, I'm wondering if that's something that's in the scope of what is presented to us today, or if that's something that, that has to go back to staff to say, hey, let's go and, and look at removing this. Cause I don't know what kind of outreach might need to happen with that. I wasn't here for that last, the five years ago when that happened and house, you know, the conversations and the decision makers at the time. But, you know, between what was presented today versus some of these other desires that we want to tackle. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Rosati. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Rosati.
We already have it. You don't have to do but design review, .35, you build whatever you want. I mean, why do we have to have it at .35? That's what I'm saying. It doesn't make sense. So why would we have to go back out? Why don't we just make the motion? And I can take a stab at a motion and see if we have a consensus. But my motion would be to adopt the resolution with the amendment of .40, one or two stories, no compatibility review. And that's a new construction or remodel?
I have a, and I think that will serve us, Mr. Rosati. But I think in order to give everyone some sort of, some sense of, let's say, comfort in the process itself, there has to be some sort of, okay. To Mr. Monaco's comment, what could happen is, let's say you have nice, let's say you have nice ranch style houses on the street. They're similar characteristics and so forth and so on. And someone decides to come and build a modern style home right in the middle of the block. Now, it's gonna be out of place. It's not gonna, it's not in my, okay, here's the thing.
But you can do that, you can do that right now.
No, I know you can do that right now with the 3,000 square foot .35. That's why that part doesn't make sense. I understand that. But I think, but I think in order to keep some sense of blending, not exact, some sort of continuity. And I'm not, like I said originally, I'm not a fan of every house looking the same, no. But some sort of continuity, and they don't even all have to be ranch style, but similar in style.
I agree. We don't, we're not living in an HOA.
Right. So similar, similar style with different elements and so forth that blends in. Now, I understand that opens the door for some subjectivity. And that's what we're trying to avoid. But it's almost like a catch 22 situation. There has to be some blending in where you can't just put something out of, let's call it from Mars in the middle of the street of houses around you.
But you're doing that right now. At .35, you're talking 300 square feet. That's what you're talking about. You can build, you can build your modern house at .35 in the middle of the rancher right now.
But what I'm trying to say is, to avoid, what I'm trying to say is control that in addition to giving additional square footage, going back to .4, but giving some sense of continuity to the neighborhood, to the block.
But it's the, we're here, the whole reason why we're here tonight is because of the design review.
I know. I know. But I also, but here's the thing. If we've, if we're able to address the bulk and mass, and let's say that 3,000 square foot .35 FAR home is modern home, and they built it where they have the articulation, they have the second story setback and so forth. It's still gonna look out of place. And it's a dilemma. It's a dilemma to try and solve an issue where you have a neighborhood and suddenly a house pops up that's completely out of place.
I agree. My biggest problem, my biggest issue would be the bulk. And as long as that can be, excuse me, addressed, the bulk and mass is usually the big issue. You have this monstrosity sitting in the middle of the street.
And we've addressed that. I think we've addressed that.
It's addressed. The bulk is addressed in the property development standards.
Right, right.
That's what, the heavy lifting's been done.
It's been done, yes.
Chair, can I just add a little bit to the discussion? I know this is the board, but I just want to make sure, so I understand the discussion. If I may. Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. I just, so it sounds like from what I'm hearing from the board is everything that was presented in the ordinance, it seems like there's, you haven't taken a vote, but we didn't hear the feedback like the other sections that were being discussed. There was concern from the board as a whole. Sounds like there's a specific discussion that we're focusing in on, which is the neighborhood compatibility guidelines, how they apply to a project, and the issue of what's already in the code currently as far as that threshold that Vice Chair Rosati has mentioned, which is that if you're .35 and less than 3,000 square feet, you don't have to comply with the guidelines, the neighborhood compatibility. You can basically build what you want. But yet, for additions that exceed, you know, kind of the current prescribed threshold of 500 feet, and we're saying pushing that to 700 feet, that that would put you back into single family special development and therefore neighborhood compatibility. If I understand that correctly, that's kind of where the discussion is. It's everything else, like the walls and fences, the pools.
All that is good. You know, I have the hangup about the garage, but we worked that out. I'm good with everything else. I just think that the neighborhood, it makes zero sense to have neighborhood compatibility for a 5,000 square foot house.
Understood. And so the, so let me, and we didn't really talk about this in the report, but maybe it'll help the discussion. One of the things that we were attempting to do, and we called it a phase one, so maybe I should elaborate on why we called it phase one, was to look at the low hanging fruit as it relates to, you know, inconsistencies in the code and bring that to you now with the caveat. And I'm just putting it out there, you know, whether it's, whether it's great to know and continue down the discussion, fine. But just wanted to let you know that a second phase is intended to happen, which has been funded. In other words, we have everything set up to go through the process of bringing a phase two, where it allows you to, in essence, kind of talk through with the designer, with the design team here, the different scenarios that you guys are kind of grappling with as far as how do you assure that bulk and mass on, you know, in the longer term is addressed, but not make it, as you're saying, more subjective, but make it more objective, like the standards and whatnot. That would, that would be an upcoming phase. I only put that out there because I wanted you to be aware that we didn't bring this to you as the, like the one chance we were saying, we're just gonna bring this once and then we're not gonna address it. This was a phase one to a two-phase approach that would happen during this year. This, and when I say this year, I mean this fiscal year. So I just wanted to put that out there. I mean, whatever the direction from the board is, we totally understand the concerns. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that this wasn't your only bite at the apple over the next six to eight months.
Well, to that comment, Mr. Ramirez, did I understand you correctly that phase two or the others, some of the other elements are gonna be brought to us this year before the end of this year? We need to say fiscal year, did you mean?
June, June of 2022.
Oh, the city fiscal year. Okay, not, 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 okay.
Because some of the things that you're wading into, which are, I mean, I understand the passion, I understand you're dealing with this like we are when they come to you, that some of these may require kind of a little more unpacking of some of the issues, because there's probably other things in the code that you all, to Mr. Vice Chair Rosati's point, on placement of structures, garages and others, and even the modulations, right, the different iterations of modulations to make it, as you're saying, more easy to read and usable, that we were gonna bring that back with having that expertise and support of it. But with that said, regardless of what we're doing going forward, I just wanted to make sure you had that context. Because I didn't want it to make it seem like it was your only bite at the apple, regardless of what you recommend to the council.
Well, is this gonna be presented to the council piecemeal? Like, if we take a vote on this, is this now going to go to the council? As it is right now?
The recommended updates that are noted in the agenda packet, with the red lines, with any amendments that you make as part of your motion, would be going forward as a package deal to the council for consideration. And the reason for that is that there are these things that we're currently bringing to your attention are pressing issues that have actually caused delays now. It's not something that it's a nice to have in the future. It's, they're actually creating issues now to be able to meet some of the objectives from the council, and that is to improve streamlining and reduce the processing times. So we're doing it now for that very reason, is to address those issues.
And let's help them. Let's help these guys.
Well, how do we simplify?
We're in a world right now where you can subdivide one lot into four units. We're in a world right now where you can take a thousand square foot ADU and put it on the back of a house by right. What's 300 square feet? If you don't want to, if you don't want to do that, then go .35 across the board. New construction or addition, .35?
I don't think 300 square feet is really going to add to the bulk and mass of any structure.
No.
If you have a 1,300 square foot structure and you do 1,600, let's say 1,300, you do 1,600. How much bulk and mass is it really adding? None. If you have a 4,000 square foot structure and then you add, let's say, 600 feet, how much bulk and mass is that going to add? I think, as I mentioned earlier, the bulk and mass comes down to if the building is looking down at you at the, you know, when you're standing on the street. If you have the setbacks that we have in place for the second story, that's never gonna happen. That's never gonna happen.
I agree. I 100% agree with you.
So I think we should just go back to .4 and call it a day and be done.
That's what I said. I said with the amendment, .40, one story, two story, no compatibility, single family home guidelines. Same thing as .35, but 300 square feet bigger.
Or 400 depending on the lot or the size, or 500 depending on the size, the lot size.
If the structure is smaller on a smaller lot and larger on a larger lot.
Right, exactly. And we're never gonna have these, I think this whole thing, if I may, this whole thing started when I guess supposedly there were complaints about these houses being built with these Roman style houses with the two large columns in the front and this huge porch area. This is how this whole thing started.
Your memory is 100% correct. That's exactly how this started.
That's what we were told. We were told that this is not good, it's not compatible, it's not working. And all those houses that had those two columns in the front and had those large porches, all of them had one thing in common. They were two-story wall straight up. And that's what the problem was because it looked massive. And I agree with the fact that it looked massive. But now, now that you've limited the porch height to 12 feet, and then we have the setbacks for the second stories, I don't think it's gonna make a difference if it's .35 or .40. It's not gonna matter at all.
Quick question for Vice Chair Rosati. Since you're a professional real estate, how much do these houses in Burbank go per square foot basis?
I mean, you're all over the map. New construction, I mean.
Just say like, you know, say that 900 square foot home that you said, or an average 2,000.
900, $900,000.
But like a per square, how much per square foot?
Thousand a foot. It could go all the way up to 1,300 a foot.
So I guess I bring that up in terms of when we talk about what does 300,000, 300 square foot mean? Like, in the bulk instance, it probably doesn't mean much. But it also means much, you know, it's gonna add all those smaller houses that maybe exist here that are maybe within reach of someone, they then get out of reach once you start adding 300, adding more onto it. So I would be more in favor of sticking at .35. But I do agree with this consensus about removing the, some of these other limitations.
But don't you think it would be greener and more wise from a material standpoint if we can eliminate the reason why people are building these ADUs? I mean, at 2,300 square feet, that's not a mansion. And people are already by right adding 1,000 square feet for extra space. Why not pull it all into one roof? Have more green space, less material usage. It's just greener that way if we do that.
Well, if we have the bulk and height plane setback anyway, you're pushing back further in the building footprint too. So you add more, you're gonna, you know, that 300 square feet won't be bulky if it's not in the front. You throw it all in the back, you're moving all that green space anyway. So I get that concern. You know, you talk about modular housing, you talk about prefab stuff, it's a little bit, you know, there's options there for those things. But I don't think that's, you know, we're also giving away free square footage for garages anyway. So like, I mean, you're getting that 400 square foot free with a garage. So you kind of have that already. So I think you've already getting that up to that .40 anyway. So it's kind of, there's no provisions to park your car in the garage. So you're getting free square footage as it is.
Mr. Gambo, I think the effect of having someone be able to build a larger house will help them decide whether they're gonna add an ADU or not. Because when you say $1,000 a square foot, I mean, I don't know if it's 1,000. I think it's probably more like average 550 a square foot, you know, depending on, average 550 square foot in Burbank. Nevertheless, the money is, the money or the amount of money is not an issue because that same person is gonna say, you know what? Let me build an ADU in the back, 1,000 square feet. Adds money, adds more money. But if I have a family who could use that extra 300 square feet, and by having that extra 300 square feet gives them more flexibility and gives them a bigger backyard, they're gonna opt to add that 300 or 350 or 400 square feet to the house instead of adding an ADU in the back. So money-wise, no, no, no. Do both. Investors are gonna do that regardless. But people who are basically are gonna live in the house and it's their residence, I'd rather, I'd rather have everything under one roof than trying to do, okay, under one roof, but it's not enough. Now I'm gonna go put an ADU in the back because I can.
I mean, it's all, I get what you're saying, but it's all like, this is also subjective. We're also projecting our own, you know, values on that. There's also the people who want to have their backyard studio, they're gonna do their ADU anyway. Or they want to have a unit for their in-laws, like an actual in-law unit, or guests to come by. They want it separate from their unit. So I think we're digressing in this conversation a little bit in terms of like what people want and are gonna use their home for. So I think the, you know, the 300 square feet at even $500 a square foot is still 150 grand. You know, we're talking about as far as adding on to what that house might be. So when you're talking about imagine-ization, you're taking that $900,000 home, now it's well over a million, right? Just with that 300 square feet. You know, again, it's broad generalization. Maybe that's not the priority of this conversation. It's, we're talking about bulk and massing everything. But I think there are other issues besides just that bulk and massing. There's, if it's on the back, you're losing that green space anyway. So all I have to say is, I would rather see it 3, .35 even for additions. Like you said, Vice Chair Rosati, you're within that building range, like boom, have at it. You're gonna, you follow these other development standards, and you don't need to go to design review and everything. So I would rather keep it as that and maybe save the extra .5 for the next phase and see what, let people, the rest of the community chime in, see what they say about it as far as if that 5.5 square or .5 FAR matters for that in the future. I think that would be where I would like to land on that. But, you know, there's four of us here.
And how is that, and how is that going to help the planning department in streamlining the process?
I mean, it's gonna be the same thing where it's, if it's under 3.5 or .35, then it's the same thing. You know, it's all the other stuff is gonna help them. So it's, if it's .4, you can help by eliminating the .4 availability, then they'll streamline it because then no one can go to .4. That's how you would help them in that case. But if you want to allow .4, either if it's across the board like this proposal, or it's that review that doesn't streamline it. So either lower it so it's nothing goes over it, or you allow it for everything like was suggested. That would be the way to streamline it. So.
It sounds like the arithmetic, uh, can be used to simplify things, but it's kind of come down to. And again, Mr. Zadi, you, as, as a real estate person, you know, how is that gonna affect the marketability and the value of surrounding properties if you've got that one house in the middle of the block that's sticking out like a sore thumb?
Yeah, wait, 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 wait. You, you keep referring to a house sticking out like a sore thumb. You're, there's no house that's sticking out like a sore thumb that's three hundred square feet bigger than another one. I would guarantee you, you wouldn't be able to point out the house that's bigger than the others at three hundred square feet. You, you, you gotta keep coming back to the design, the, the property development standards. It, it's already in here. You, you can't, the modulation, the, the, the sugar cube thing that you talked about is you can't build that. So you can't build a house that sticks out like a sore thumb. And if it's three hundred square feet, if it's single level, there's no way you're gonna be able to tell. And it's two story, I, as a, as a professional, I couldn't tell you, looking at a house, one's three hundred square feet more than another. That, that's, you know, you're, you're not talking a lot of square footage here. You're talking about three hundred square feet.
And, and I don't, and I don't think the other side was considered in terms of what, what does it cost to put on that additional three hundred square feet? So, uh, it, it's really, it, it, it's really going to control itself or, 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 or basically, uh, if someone is gonna spend an extra hundred thousand dollars, hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that three hundred square feet and, and that's what they're gonna have, uh, end up doing to add that additional three hundred square feet. They're gonna spend another hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, are they willing to do that to add three hundred square feet? Is that within their budget? So I don't, I don't think the marketability or, or, or the price of the house or is the house gonna be more expensive or less expensive and how many people can afford it? I don't think that, that, that will be an issue because that three hundred square feet could be used for someone to bring in their, their parents and, and put them in, you know, in a, in a master bedroom with a bath and so forth and so on. So their parents can stay there. So they don't have to occupy another apartment somewhere. So it opens up an apartment for someone else to come in and use. So that, so it's not, it shouldn't be an issue of the money. I think the, the, the issue is going to be, it's going to give that owner more flexibility. And with the fact that we have been able to address the modulation, we, we have been able to address the bulk and, and mass of the structure, I think, I think to simplify things, it was at point four oh. So basically what we're talking about, are we gonna do point four oh without review? Are we gonna do point three five without review? I think, I think there's no difference between, uh, two of them. And I think it's more advantageous to give the flexibility to the property owner because it's not gonna matter to someone who has a large lot. It's not gonna matter that much whether I can build a fifty five hundred square foot home or I can build a six thousand square foot home. It's not, but it's gonna matter to the guy who has a small lot, who's gonna be able to build a little bit more and add on a little bit more. So that house works for them. So we're really, we're really, if we take it down to point three five, what we're really doing is, in reality, hurting the guy or the person who has a smaller lot, who basically is limited by the size, let's say they have a sixty two hundred square foot lot, fifty eight hundred square foot lot. We're hurting that person by taking away that half a percent. And in, in fact, sixty seven hundred and fifty that we're using is the average, doesn't mean that every single lot is sixty seven hundred and fifty square feet. So, uh, that half a percent is, it, it hurts the guy with the smaller lot not be able to put that additional hundred feet, hundred fifty feet onto their home to make it, you know, more livable, more, more, uh, better. It's for, for the guy who has the large lot, it really doesn't matter.
And, and not everyone's gonna build max. Maybe they need twenty five hundred square feet or they can't afford to go max. Maybe they can only go twenty five. But twen-, you know, twenty three hundred square feet is just, yeah, again, I, I think it, the, I think the key word you used there, it gives people flexibility. And you're still not, you're still not a mansion and you still got the development guidelines in place to stop any, you know, eyesores.
That's, I think that's a very good point, eyesores. That's, that's the thing that concerns me. All right. So how does this make things simple?
I didn't hear your question.
How does this, how does this now make things simple?
Well, it takes the, 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 the review compatibility review away from staff. And now they can just approve it, just like they do a point three five of new construction. It takes all that out of play. It, it completely changes their life.
I agree.
All right.
And it makes it, and it makes it simpler for, and it makes it simpler to the applicants, you know, we, we don't have all point three five or point four and so forth and so on. All that code goes away.
A lot can happen in twenty four months. Yep. I agree.
I think you're on mute.
Yes, Vice Chair.
All right, let me take a stab at the motion, guys. We adopt a staff's resolution with the following amendments. Going up to point four oh, single story, two story, no design compatibility review. Anything over three thousand square feet, the design review comes into play. That's my motion.
Including additions, correct?
Including, yeah, new construction or remodel.
So I understand it. So you're, you're leaving the three thousand square foot threshold or point four. Is that?
It's point four, you can build up to point four. No design review, new construction, but there is the threshold because of three thousand square feet for design review. So anything over three thousand square feet.
Greater of then, right?
So just, and I'm sorry, but we just, just so I understand it and then that way the planners can write this down too. So, so I have a, so for the smaller lots, it'd be point four and, and the larger lots, that point four for a ten thousand square foot lot would be a four thousand.
Isn't that, isn't that what it is now?
No, no, but what I'm getting at is there's a difference between point, it says three thousand or point three five. So there's a situation where you can have a larger lot.
Right.
Where when you apply point three five to that, that's thirty five hundred square feet.
I understand.
And, and, but it's gonna be over three thousand. So that would kick it into a single family development.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that. All right. So let's just leave it at point four across the board. New construction, remodel, no compatibility review, one story, two story. That's my motion.
And what, and, and, and question before, what about the rest of the, uh, items that were discussed and addressed in, in, in the presentation tonight? As far as retaining wall, the porch height and so forth and so on.
We agree with all that. We agree with all that. All we're just discussing is this one portion. So we're in agreement, we're in agreement with the resolution and it's entirely, tiredly, except for this one little portion.
I second the motion.
Uh, I, I've, I don't, I get, I get where you're going. I, I see where everything's going here. I don't know that I, I, I can get behind the, the removing that three thousand square foot limit. Because I think part of the issue is, it's like if someone took a, took two lots back to back, boom, you got this big house. All of a sudden, you're right in the middle of a lot, uh, and where's the, you know, the, that neighborhood review? I don't know, you know, I don't know if that's against the intent of this originally and how other folks like community might feel about that when it's something that big can potentially be right in the middle of the neighborhood. Um, so I would rather keep it at that, that whatever the F A R is, but have that, uh, limit for that design review for a bigger house.
Let's ask Fred the safeguard there. So if you're on a larger lot, what's the safeguard?
If you're on a.
If you're on a larger lot.
Well, right now, the way you have it noted is, is point four. So basically if you can, you can basically build up to point four and that's what's allowed.
Right.
So there'd be not, there'd be no neighborhood compatibility. It's just submitting an application, whatever standards apply, whether it be setbacks, modulation.
Right.
Whatnot, that's, that's all that, there would be no neighborhood compatibility review because we're removing that.
So on a, on a ten thousand square foot lot, you would build a four thousand square foot house?
You could build a four thousand square foot lot without going through, the way you guys are proposing.
Right.
You would be able to do that without going through, uh, single families development permit and neighborhood compatibility.
And then if you, if, if it was the old days, you could build point three five on a ten thousand square foot lot, which is thirty five hundred square feet? No, you couldn't.
No, you'd still, you could, you could build it, but the thing, they would catch you that at three thousand, you'd go to single family development.
Development at three thousand.
So, so the.
And, and that's the part that to me, it, it doesn't make sense. In, in terms of now, now we are saying, you know what? If you have purchased a larger lot, we're not gonna let you build the same percentage as if someone had purchased a smaller lot. W- w- why are we, to me, I don't wanna use the word discrimination, but let's use the word, why are we treating those people differently? What, what is the trigger about three thousand square feet? What, what does three thousand square feet do to anyone?
I guess the, I, I don't have an answer for you, a board member of the county, because I, we'd have to go back and kind of unpack that. But what we do know is that at some point to this review process, which it came to the board and then eventually the council, that number was set that the three thousand would be the threshold beyond which single family permits would apply. And then you have this other threshold that is kind of coupled to it that says point three five or three thousand, whichever is the first that, the trigger that captures you. All I'm saying is that that's the number that's currently set in place. You can build beyond point three five and you can build beyond three thousand to the point four. But any project that goes beyond those limits would be, uh, subject to single family development review and neighborhood compatibility.
And, and that was the point that I was making earlier. When we are addressing the, the, that, that three thousand number came from, it was, it's an arbitrary number. It, it was an arbitrary number. And the reason why it was there was because, oh, well, you know what? Something that's three thousand square feet has to be massive.
Right.
It's to, it was to control the bulk and the mass. And again, the bulk and the mass of any structure that's going to be built today or, or was, is being built from four years ago, was controlled by the fact that you have that setbacks for the front, I mean, uh, for the second story, front setbacks, side setbacks. So the bulk and the mass is no longer the issue that it was. But yet that three thousand figure was left in there. So I can, I can, uh, uh, I mean, uh, just imagine having a point four on, uh, eight thousand square feet lot, right? If I, if I have an eight thousand square foot lot and I can build up to point four, that's thirty two hundred square feet. But if I have a twelve thousand square foot lot and I put a, and I put the same structure, thirty two hundred square foot structure on there, it's not gonna look the same. One is gonna look bigger than the other. One house visually is gonna look bigger than the other. So I, I don't understand that three thousand foot limitation there.
All right.
Because it should be, each, every lot and every lot owner should be treated the same. If I, this, if this is my lot, it's point four. If this is my lot, it's point four. Someone should not be penalized because they have a larger lot.
So I will.
Doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me.
I will amend my motion to withdraw the three thousand square foot cap.
So, um, Vice Chair, just a question and maybe this will affect the motion and any subsequent amendment. If, if you're going to, so I'm looking at, uh, page exhibit A forty nine. I thi- I think we're gonna need to do that, uh, to take a close look at this. So right now, um, item number one that's noted there, it says all new two story, single family construction that exceeds, uh, point three five F A R or is larger than three thousand square feet is, is one that would in essence end up in a single family development permit, right? That's the, the item two above. What, what you're, what I heard was discussed, and maybe this is part of the motion or not, is that you would be, uh, saying point four is the upper threshold. So, so the, the question then becomes, and I guess that's a question for us too, is if we go to point four, is there, i- if that's as much as you can build, what's the point of the single family development permit at that juncture?
Um, correct. We also need to clarify, um, it's the, 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 the section that you're amending, Vice Chair. I'm only referring to new construction. It's whether we also want to look at remodels as well, because remodels is a separate trigger in, in this.
It does include remodels. It's across the board.
Across the board.
Single story, two story, remodel, new construction, point four oh.
So, so, so I'm clear.
No design review.
So, so, so I'm clear, Vice Chair, and I, I'm sorry, we're being very deliberate because I also wanna make sure the city attorney understands this as well as. If, if we go the route of what you're saying of a point four, then really the only thing that the single family development permit was there for, uh, previously would be for projects that went beyond the point three five up to point four, exceeded three thousand square feet and/or were one of these, um, scenarios where you exceeded the, the set prescribed five hundred square foot addition or in a, or in addition that was visible from the right away. So what we're, what I'm hearing being said now.
We're eliminating design review.
And, uh, my understanding, and this is something we'll need to look at, is, is also single family development permit. Because if everything's point four, then there is no single family development permit because it's all point four. We're saying that's the maximum you can build.
Right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand.
Would that not completely change your lives?
We're here to serve.
No.
I, I will say this, you're right that looking at the data, what we're currently reviewing would not be reviewed under single family. So that's, that's an obvious statement. I just, and I'm, the discussion, uh, whatever the will of the board is, I just wanna make sure we understand what is being conveyed so that we accurately reflect it in whatever recommendation you make. So what I understand is you would be basically saying you can build point four, whether it's an addition, a two story, one story, you can go up to point four on your lot size. And there would be no design review and basically that there'd be no single family development permit for it.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so do you guys have this section in front of you too? Because I think it's, I think it's good we walk through this.
Say it again.
Uh, I wanna make sure all the board has.
Page.
Page, exhibit A forty nine. So, so let's, let's just, uh, if you guys will entertain this for a moment, just I think it's gonna be good to walk through it. That way all the board's aware of what, what the motion is, with, with any amendments potentially to just capture the things that I think have been discussed. And I just wanna make sure we're very clear on what's being, uh, presented forward. It says, uh, so let's read from the top. There's the intent and purpose. The intent and purpose of the single family development permit is to help ensure new construction additions, alterations to existing housing stock are consistent with the standards of this article, the existing character of single family neighborhoods, and when applicable, the single family design guidelines. The applicability of single family developments are required for, and I read that already, point three five or three thousand. The exceptions are all new, single family construction, single story additions are exempt from single family. A one story or one story addition shall have a maximum nineteen foot top of roof, twelve foot top of plate and the space with, this is the new language in red. And then remodeling for all two story, single family homes where there is a whole house demolition would also be exceptions. Correct, Shipra? And so, and then for second story additions or remodels of existing homes adding more than seven hundred square feet. So there would be no threshold anymore.
No, no, we, 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 we're keeping those thresholds. We, we said that in the beginning. We're, we're agreeing with staff recommendations. The only things that we're touching are the F A R, new construction, remodel, single story, two story.
So if I do an addition beyond seven hundred square feet, but I'm below point four, you would want that to go through single family development permit?
No.
So that, so then it's, so then this provision would, would be removed. We wouldn't have a provision because you'd be able to build up to point four.
Okay, but I'm talking about the top of roof plate.
Oh, no, no, that, yeah, that would be stay in. But I'm talking about just square footages and any potential triggers that would put it, would have put it into a single family development.
Right.
Would go away if you're point four or less. Okay. Um, and then, this one here, this one here. Then number four, it says additions and remodels that have the potential to alter the exterior elevations of an existing single family residence. That is, so, so the, so the last one deals. That is, so, so the, so the last one deals with designated historic resources. Uh, the question is if you're doing an addition or a remodel, that would have otherwise been caught as a single family development. But it's, but it's uh, right now, we ha- this was unclear before. So we were, we were putting this in to capture those and have them go through design review. But my understanding, and this is, I'm, I'm thinking kind of through this, is don't we have certificate of appropriateness process for? We don't? We'd have to take a look. We, we just need to confirm something on the histor- potentially historic resources. Because that's kind of a different animal, but if you give us a moment. Okay. So, so the, so our proposed amended language then would also be removed for that particular issue. Because we already have a process through the city's historic preservation regs.
So those
That goes to, that goes to the
So they will be protected?
Uh, they would go through the review process uh, for that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So point four, no single family development permit, no design review. Uh, that would also apply to um, whole house demos that stay be, below point four and also for any additions under point four.
Any additions?
Whether it's one-story, two-story.
Single story, two-story.
Yeah. Okay.
And there's, there's no um, other minimum or maximum square footage threshold, correct?
That is, the point four is point four, that's as far as you go.
Alright. Um, so as amended, uh, do we need to second that amendment?
Chair Gamboa, if I could do some housekeeping on this.
Sure.
Vice Chair Rosati made his motion, uh, board member Monaco seconded it. At this point, and I think this is what uh, Vice Chair Rosati said, he withdrew his motion, which I think would be appropriate here. And I think right now would be a good time to um, state your new motion as understood by, by planning staff and you, what you guys just discussed right now.
My motion is to agree with staff's resolution with the following amendment, point four oh, new construction, remodel, single-story, two-story, point four oh, across the board, no single-family home guidelines or compatibility.
Just a slight adjustment, so no single-family development permit?
Correct.
And no neighborhood compatibility guidelines?
Okay.
I second that.
Board Member Ottekunian?
Yes.
Board Member Monaco?
As, as amended.
As amended.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes, as amended.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Chair Gamboa?
No.
Motion passes.
Um, just Vice, uh, Chair and uh, Board. What we're gonna do, just to make sure, and hopefully this is, this is acceptable to you all. What we're gonna do is we're gonna make the changes as, as proposed. And what I'd like to do is at the next meeting, your next regular meeting, is bring back the changes so you can see the actual edits and then have you at that point uh, approve them and then bring them back to you. So we, we have the motion, we have direction, but I think we would wanna come back with the actual language so that they can see the edits. Because uh, as we're going through this, we're kind of, because this was new. We weren't expecting this and, and so be it. But there's other pieces of the code that reference single-family development. And I just wanna make sure we're, we're, we're catching those so that we don't leave some remnant that you guys weren't anticipating. So we've got our direction, I just wanna bring back the code with the edits.
I agree, but it's gonna be difficult because we have to go through this whole meeting again with the board member that's missing.
Sure, well, I guess the question is, as far as them voting on it, they can, they can look at the changes and consider those. Uh, and if that person was out, or do they have to recuse themselves from that?
Yes, they would be part of the discussion.
Okay.
Um, I, I think it's what, you know, municipal code prescribes for city planning staff to bring their report to the board, uh, and then present it, you know, board deliberates and delivers their report to council. And I think at this point, I mean, the key is for me, I just wanted something digestible for the council. Um, so however we get there, I mean, there, it's allowed. So it's whatever, whatever works for the planning board and staff.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure I did not miss anything on this one. Because this is, uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's what you guys are saying. I just wanna make sure we don't leave a remnant piece that now creates a conflict. Uh, and then the best of intentions are derailed by that conflict. So I just wanna make sure we do that. So I, I'll just go on record, say we will bring that back just for you to confirm the proposed changes, uh, and that will be included in the recommendation of the council. And that would be at uh, uh, at the upcoming meeting. If we need to do any noticing, we'll make sure we'll cover that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. And thank you, Board, for the valuable comments and insights. I think that was a very productive conversation. Um, so now that that's complete, now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes for the first caller to get through the line. Um, and I'm clerk, um, please let us know if we have any callers on the line. And again, the number's eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five.
I did wanna thank Shipra for her work that was uh, was well laid out.
So for the record, board member Heiner will have to recuse herself.
Correct.
Okay.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. So there being no further public comment, and I'll declare the public comment period closed. So now's the time for reports from sta- city staff. Are there any reports?
Uh, there are no reports.
Thank you. Now is the time for the approval of the minutes from the October eleventh, twenty twenty-one planning board meeting. Are there any questions, comments and/or a motion?
I can move that.
I second.
Board Member Ottekunian?
I'll abstain, so, since I was not present.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Chair Gamboa?
I'll abstain as well.
Motion does not pass.
Motion passes for, for the minutes, since it's a non-subjective matter, a two zero vote for this passes.
Thank you. Uh, now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no actions may take place except to place an item on the future agenda. Do members of the boards have any items to introduce? Okay. Um, seeing as there are no new items, then uh, now is the time for any city planner comments? Does uh, staff have any comments?
Uh, just one. So hopefully you, you all can indulge me, and I know it's been a long night, so I'll try to keep it short. So I just wanted to uh, let you all know that uh, one of our uh, planning team members, Ms. Lisa Frank, will be leaving the city within uh, the next week or so.
That's a tough one.
Uh, yes, I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with you, Vice Chair. Um, so Lisa's been with us for six years. Um, she is one of the senior planners, she's been working on the housing element. Many of you have seen her give presentations before. Uh, and so we, I just wanted to acknowledge her like we did Lucia a couple of weeks ago. And I know I wanted to do it in front of you all because you have experienced her uh, high level of professionalism and skill. And uh, we, we are a better team for having Lisa here and uh, watching her grow and develop into a, a, a great professional. We're gonna miss her, but we're also gonna wish her the best in, in her new endeavors and um, uh, you know, she'll be, she'll be um, going on to bigger and better things. But we are happy that she was part of the Burbank family. Uh, me personally, I'm happy to have known her professionally and, and to a certain extent as a friend as well, uh, as much as your boss can be. But uh, but uh, wanted to really, like I said, just acknowledge all her hard work. Six years of just constant improvement and professionalism. And I think the community is better for it. Um, and I will see that product on display, even in her absence in the work that she did on the housing element. Uh, and actually a couple of projects she got approved, including a density bonus project on South San Fernando. So Lisa, just from, from the rest of the team, I wanted to acknowledge you and all your hard work. And we really thank you and wish you the best. And I wanted to do it in front of a group of uh, board members here that uh, have direct experience in your level of professionalism. I thought it would be warranted to do it in their presence, so thank you.
Thank you for, for that. Thank you, Lisa, for all your service. It's been a great senior presentations over this time.
Perhaps Lisa may wanna stay now that you were surprised with this result here today. That may have, that may have some influence on, on her, you know? Instead of four-hour days, you may wanna knock it down to nine hours and she's gonna hang around.
I, I've coaxed her to stay a couple of times, and so we've benefited. But I think uh, third time, it wasn't gonna happen, but thank you, guys. I appreciate you helping me out on that.
Alright, uh, is there anything else from staff or is that uh?
We're good. Thank, thank you for giving me the, giving me the mic for a bit.
No, of course. Um, so on that note, we will now adjourn to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty-one at six PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television. We'll be able to provide public comment the following two ways, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage at www.burbankca.gov/ecomments or by calling in directly to the planning board meeting at eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five. Thank you all for your participation and have a good night.